Okay, remember we're gonna get started. I call this meeting, uh, Mayor Council, what session is on order? We'll do the road call.
Clark, come out over here.
Okay, for the first session, we're gonna sit and talk. Councilman Lawson.
President.
Councilman Underwood.
President.
Councilwoman Kelly.
President.
Councilwoman Lovey.
President.
And then Councilwoman Dyer.
President.
Okay, okay. Um, we sent out an email, but in your packet, there's some information. And, um, I'd like for everybody to look over this. Drop down any questions or comments that you have. And when we do our council meeting next week, we're gonna go over what's in this packet. Uh, we're gonna have another discussion about the fire fee because we need to talk about, uh, the unincorporated and folks that are not on, uh, that don't receive our services right now. What you mean don't receive our services? Or are not getting fire services from us?
Little whiskey. They own some of our water, but.
Right, our chest, that's what it is.
Yeah, we can't charge them.
But they don't know that the kind of government will agree that first part of the law.
Little whiskey?
Yes.
And I was under discussion if the fire was bad enough, then they will respond.
They will respond, yeah.
That's usually a mutual aid if you don't get it.
We have that.
But a mutual aid agreement is something that they want to kind, say, I will respond if I can, it's not guaranteed. So, um, you know, I don't see how we can charge a fire fee to people that were in agreement, like Long County. I don't know how many people that is.
I think it's like a hundred, it's about a hundred houses we provide water to, but they're in Long County.
Yeah, I don't see how we can charge a fire fee for that because we're in a mutual aid agreement with them.
Well, remember, that's the question that came up at our meeting when, uh, the fire chief spoke. Are we gonna do a proxy awarding fire fee? Or is it gonna include the ones who have water, but we don't have, we don't offer fire services to them unless it's under the mutual aid? So that's something we need to come to terms with. And I think legally, uh, and I have to check with the city, we'll have to check with the city attorney. I don't think that, uh, legally we can do that.
I know we can.
Okay, and I know there was something that, uh, he was, they were stating about the issue with the mutual aid agreement. So we'll have to, you know, take all of that.
What, what, like, we had a couple of mobile home parks that had their own water system, I was gonna.
That's another thing.
I mean, is that, because I know of two.
On Dunleavy behind the gas station.
Yeah, and then the one to the left. I know it's on there, it's on the crib, that is running water system, right?
And then.
Glenbrook, yeah, Glenbrook.
And then the one right here on Van Deiger, well, all that bill that this?
Yeah. I don't know, I really, I don't know how they pay for it.
They don't pay for water, but they pay for trash services. So we can still include it on their bill because we still pick up their trash. I know Van Deiger, we pick up their trash, I'm not a hundred percent sure about what they're. Or.
I think they have a trash can in his bag.
I'm off the.
But that's, that's probably over a hundred. I don't have.
Glenbrook, after the water, we don't, I thought it was the one.
I mean, the spring.
They have their own. Well, but I thought it was the one directly behind the store, like on Wilder, Wilder Road in the.
I think it's Glenbrook, that's Cribs, right? Paul Cribs owns that one.
Uh, David McDonald.
David McDonald's, oh, the one behind the store.
Yeah.
The store's own Glenbrook.
Yeah, that's the one that they has it somewhere.
Okay, okay.
Well, how's that, how, how was that look? If we take away those.
Those dollars of budget.
Yeah.
What other question then?
What's that?
If we take up fee that was passed. So, that will be on the.
That fee, the fee has not been passed because we have not had a public hearing.
You don't have to have a public hearing for that fee.
Because the charter states that we can do that.
We only had a public hearing for the military, but not the fire fee.
Okay.
So if we take that, how, you go back and look at it, you know, on the budget.
So that's something that we're gonna have to get back and discuss and get information from payments.
Let me go back to the discussion that we need to have. We don't need to have a public hearing in order to charge the citizens a fee as accurate as we.
Right, you don't, right, you don't have to have a public, a legal public hearing for.
What's that?
I'm under the same impression that we don't, we don't, I feel, you know.
I mean, but if you know something different than.
No, you all said that the charter states that we don't have to. I'm not gonna argue against the charter.
Well, I didn't take the charter, I just was told legally you don't have to have a public hearing for that, a fire fee, but the military, yes, we have to have three public hearings for the military.
So we've already had the.
Military public hearings.
We had three.
Yes.
But I don't, I don't think they count as public hearing because the military was never set. I think you have to have a military rate set, then you have the three public hearings. What we had was more informational.
Information session.
Of the stuff, now you have to have a military rate set, say twenty, then we had a public hearing, stood three public hearings. Or on that, that's the way I.
Well, maybe that's what I'm thinking about. I thought we had to come back and have a hearing on it, and that was my mistake.
So that, that fire fee, and I talked to some people about that fire fee. Instead of putting, I, I, I just don't. If we're gonna revisit, revisit it, I think we need to be good when we do it. Um, i.e., why not just say, okay, we're gonna charge a hundred dollar a year fire fee? And then we tier, like, we have four tiers, okay, businesses, you're a tier one, you're gonna pay X, Y, Z. Tier two is two thousand square feet or below, or however we deem it. And then you build your way up to the tier level. And then you're still getting income because why should somebody that's living in Glen, Glenbrook pay the same fire fee that this business right here at Parker's is paying?
I want to go back, man, why shouldn't we? We don't owe them, but they the same fee as our business.
Yeah.
And that is what was stated when we had our council meeting and the fire chief talked about that, there was a question that we had, and if I'm not mistaken, the city attorney was supposed to look into that. Because I remember stating, what are we gonna do about the, uh, commercial businesses? Are they going to pay the same thing because it's not fair, it's not right?
No, it's not, I mean, and I, I think just shove, quick, quick fix, shove twenty-five dollars a month down somebody's, or the residence, uh, through was just, uh, I, I think there's a better way, I think it's some work that the, the fire chiefs needs to do. You can't come into a meeting every month and say something totally different, the way you wanna approach it. That's my, that's my opinion.
So we would need like a formula?
Yeah, I think you set the formula, or we set the formula, okay, businesses, you would be at this tier, or, and then if you're a mobile home, you're at this tier, um. You know, even even throw senior citizens, if you're a senior citizen in there and you're living on your own, if you can throw a tier like that in there. We can make that tier, it's no set thing, we can have however we want.
That's something that we just, uh.
Just a flat rate?
I think the way you collect that too is maybe through the taxes.
You mean, like, the county collects it?
Yeah, I agree.
The county do it.
They collect what?
Right, but the county's gonna charge us for collecting it.
So why can't we collect it with the county?
That's, that was the easiest way to do it, but, I mean, we all.
Or we're, I mean, I don't have, I mean, I understand the, the monthly fee, but if we did, uh, a tier level and then a hundred dollars a year, so I guess January your water bill says, well, a hundred dollars will be two hundred dollars, I mean, there's, there's ways you might.
Right.
It's one of the options.
But I wouldn't recommend the county collecting, because the county's gonna charge us. And we can't, we need all our money, you know?
Well, and you gotta look too, if we strictly on the, the fire fee with, with the, the, some of the, um, people that aren't going to get charged that fire fee. We, it might go up.
Who would be those that are.
Like the long, the ones that, the mobile homes, um.
Right, but the mobile homes still should be charged the fire fee, we just have to figure out how.
We would charge the mobile home park rather than the residential.
And then we look at that as a business.
Yes.
That's, and that's why you look at the.
I, I don't know.
Now, if we do that, what would be the consequence if they don't pay the fire fee?
Like, who doesn't pay?
Paul Curtis, I know, was it Curtis that we had an issue with before? No, it wasn't, it was one of these contractors we had an issue with before trying to get our money. And Ms. Moss had to go back and forth, but anyways, what would be the consequence if they decide they're not gonna pay us?
Well, what was stated in the council meeting, uh, suggestions was they don't get the water gets shut off.
Right, but they don't, the trailer park doesn't have water through the city, so how would they be recommended for not paying it?
Yeah. And, and that's the, um, the benefit on through the taxes, because they can put, hey, you know, now they got, you gotta pay your, all your taxes before, is, is, so that's the plus minus, I guess, to look at it. I don't know, we, I don't even know how much they would need to charge, I don't know. I, I think we're gonna.
If they don't pay it, this is my suggestion. If they don't pay, then we can go through the process and put the lien on the property.
Yeah, but if you do that, we all know how the law system works in Liberty County. How long are we looking at before there's some, um, revenue coming back to you, you know what I mean?
Right, like, would, because if we say we're gonna charge the trailer park five hundred dollars fire fee a year, would it even be worth it to go through the legal process to collect that five hundred dollars?
But if you put it on their taxes, they gotta, they gotta put it on that.
But that would be too late this go around.
Yeah.
For tax, put it on the tax bill.
This is my process of thinking, um. If they don't pay it this year, in twenty twenty-five, we put a lien on their property. And they'll have to, they would have to pay that if you.
I don't know, I'm not so sure you can put a lien on somebody's property.
Yes, you can, because they put it on behind there.
A water hole.
Well, tell you how a water bill that we're collecting, they don't know how it's a fire fee.
I don't know.
I'm taking it down to.
I mean, you figured the taxes, you just thought they were, what, three or four years before they put them up for options?
Right.
What do you think we're gonna talk about on water fees? It might be a little bit longer.
I, I don't know.
I don't know the answer to that.
I think that we should establish a base rate when, when thinking of the formula. And, you know, that base rate could be added to, um, maybe, like, the property size and the value of the property, and then, you know, like a risk factor. That's, you know, and that will cover like commercial.
But again, how would we charge the trailer park?
I think it would be considered a business.
Right, but I'm saying, how are we gonna bill them, we're just gonna send them a bill, this is your fire fee, we need to pay by whatever date? Is that what we're saying we're doing for the business, well, for the trailer parks, not necessarily the businesses, because they did water bill, but the trailer park, for instance, we're just gonna send them a bill saying you owe X amount of dollars, you buy whatever, whatever date? Is that what we're saying we do?
Everyone will get paid, um, bill monthly, I mean, uh, annually. And if they wanna pay it monthly, that's, you know, all really good. However, if it's a mobile home park, they're gonna get their bill just like I would get mine, my residence for my property. And.
Right, but you're paying yours through your water bill, right? Are we still putting it on the water bill?
We have this, I can, can, that's what I'm asking, is that how we're gonna do the. I'm just giving an option, so.
And I'm throwing it out there so we can discuss, but another thing we have to remember too, in those mobile home parks, some of the people own their mobile homes.
That's not our responsibility, because they pay a fine fee to be in that park.
But they're not to the owner, I mean, it's, that's to the owner.
And that would be the owner of the park's responsibility, not ours.
So what we're thinking, or what you're thinking is the bill goes whoever owns the property.
Right, if Paul Krabs owns the.
Trailer park.
Trailer park, or the mobile home park, and they get a bill every month. Whether or not the person that's living in lot seven pay their fee or not, that's not our responsibility. That's gonna be Mr. Krabs' responsibility to collect that fee.
You know these questions are coming.
Yeah, well, another question's gonna come up, like you just said, if I own five houses, you pay me rent, and then I pay your bills, trash, or whatever, I don't, I don't pay your, uh, water bill that month, and the water gets shut off, we're gonna have a lot, some residents get affected of, of that right there, because the water's gonna get shut off because of landlord's problem. I know it's not our problem, but that's gonna be an issue that's gonna come up.
That's gonna be between the, if the landlord pays the water bill, then the landlord is gonna be responsible for collecting the fees for that property, because they are the owner of that property.
We did that, but I understand what you're saying, they're not gonna call the landlord, they're.
I mean, houses go all the time.
No problem happening.
And what the city hall would do?
They say.
Prefer them to their landlord.
I think, I think what we need to look at, where it doesn't affect us as much, we're still getting the benefit of the fire fee, that's the route we go, and it doesn't put all this, uh, these nasty phone calls at the, the city hall. Is we put it on the tax bill, and then let the county, or whoever does that collects it, let them argue with it, you know what I mean?
They don't still get the city, city hall will still get the calls.
Oh, yeah, you're not gonna.
It's walk-up deal. We can't avoid that.
But if your water bill isn't gonna go from ninety dollars to a hundred and thirty, or a hundred and forty or whatever. I think the, uh, the fire fee is, uh, a big headed, um, I think the, the millage rate might have been the better.
Better way to know.
Better way to know.
But with the millage rate, my only concern was, I had questions that we couldn't get answered by the county. You know, if we have city taxes, how is that gonna affect my county taxes? Are my county taxes gonna go down is my number one question. Because my county taxes shouldn't stay the same if I now have city taxes and county taxes. And they couldn't get to us to answer those questions. She's back in, she's been back in office now, Ms. Roberts, so someone should be, I'm sorry, can you, can you? Uh, answer those questions?
You talking about, right?
I think she's on leave, she's gonna retire. Ms. Roberts?
Mm-hmm, she has staff, and there's somebody under.
Oh, yeah, someone under, yeah.
December was her training, and she had, you know, medical stuff going on, so she.
So, like, what, what kinda questions, like, just a, uh, 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 mill rate and impose a mill rate questions, type questions, is that, is that what you're looking?
Yeah, I mean, number one, well, I'm gonna just say, my only question is, are my county taxes gonna go down? Because my county taxes this year, as due February twentieth, I think our taxes are due thirty-seven hundred dollars. And then you all impose a city tax, so now I got thirty-seven hundred plus whatever my city tax is. If I have city tax, now my county taxes should go down, so I don't know how, or how it's gonna go down, but it means.
Shit, where do they pay, where are those county taxes for?
Um, hold on, I'm not supposed to.
Is that the case in Tricia?
Schools.
Education has your own taxes.
Well, no, you have your own taxes, you have the hospital, and you have the county industrial tax on here, you have like four different things on here, but.
It's about six.
Pulling it up now.
I, I think the, the, the benefit, I mean, the, the multi-viral, uh, tax-free, we, we, we've, uh, I mean, people gotta understand, this is twenty, twenty twenty-four.
Right.
And, and we wanna provide service to the residents, but when you start talking public safety, i.e. that fire and that police, they do not make money, nowhere near what their budget is. You, you, you gotta, you gotta be prepared to, uh, pay for their services. I mean, because if you look at the budget, I, I wasn't, we, I wasn't a part of the budget, but I looked at it, and you can see where, where, where was that, I mean, that police and that fire, it was, trust me. Fire is not cheap, employees cost a lot of money, and. Fire is not a, a cheap service.
I guess I'm just wondering, why would the county tax go down?
Because I gotta see.
Because we're, we're paying the city taxes.
Some of the services we don't have to pay.
Right, because it's your city tax, which are county tax, you're paying for public safety.
Actually, she did say, I just forgot what she said, she came in, I think I did hear her say it was certain, we wouldn't pay for. Yeah, I don't think walk-up bill pays for certain things, I mean, the only services that walk-up bill is really animal control, maybe?
Animal control is one of the things.
I would pay for animal control, public safety, the hospitals, schools.
Well, the school and the hospital, you're not gonna, I don't think that is a county thing, the EMS, I mean, you, you gotta have that, um.
That's county, I'm right on one, all right, yeah.
I mean, there's stuff that they provide, and you're not gonna, no matter which way you go, they're not gonna break it down with the fire fee either.
I mean, I get the sheriff's control here, so, I mean, we gotta, we have to take whatever with us.
And that's why I didn't understand why they were coming to us, if want to increase the amount that we pay for, uh,
Same services.
For the same services.
So.
That.
So the way that's broken down, so the sheriff has got to provide services to us. Now, if you call, if I call nine-one-one, doesn't mean, okay, I'll send the police out there, they might be on the east end, they don't have that services there. Now, if you go to, like, Flemington, has, they rent, not rent, but they pay for their own police from the sheriff's office.
They have one of their own.
Yeah, so that, that's what he was talking about, now, if we went that route, that's what, uh, Chief Hagan was talking about, if we didn't have our police. Now, the jail, I know we had to pay a fee for the jail when we arrest someone, and that's just, you're not gonna get around that, GSP hasn't paid that.
I do not know that guy. Well, we had to pay.
But one other thing is, I went, I talked to our, yesterday, they're doing a new program, it started yesterday, and I said, you know, that, so the fees that, uh, the fees that they collect will all come to walk-up bill.
For what?
The cases that they have, they charge.
Reverse, I like that.
The money will go to the walk-up bill, nobody's on the county rate.
Right.
Not all of them, those fees are going to be down. Um, domestic violence, uh, Egypt, it's about twenty things that are included in that fee.
He showed me, um, one of the cases, and I sat there and I looked, you know, and there was two fees, one seventy-five dollar fee, and out of that seventy-five dollars, a probation officer, if a probation officer is signed, will get forty-five. The rest of that fire savings, five hundred and twenty-five, and most of them were five hundred and twenty-five. The five hundred and twenty-five plus the thirty that's left over from the seventy-five, whatever, will come straight to walk-up bill. Through the demurging program.
And I think it was for minor offenses.
Yes, it's not for felonies, it's the means only, you know?
I'm telling you. Small amount of marijuana.
It may be five dollars, but those different agencies that all under that, and that's why, um, if you pay it all at once, it's not as much, but if you pay it.
Paying money.
It paid it plenty, so much of it has to go to the different agencies.
But I think, Marissa, and we still get that fee for the, the revert, wait.
Reverse.
Convert, yeah, that's what she said.
That's totally, that's separate, yeah. Okay, so we need to look at, uh, and think of, think of, um, what you wanna talk about in regard to this fire fee, any questions and everything, anything you may have. And I'll go back down to, uh, taxes that the office can see, um, if anyone could be here at our council meeting to answer some questions.
Yeah, I got a question about that. When we, like, for that right there, like, if Ms. Glenda or Q or one of them comes down here, can we let them brief us before we go in front of the council, so I mean, in front of the public, we're, we're a little bit educated on the whole process?
You know, when they came before, uh, it was videotaped, and I sent that out, I sent it, I had the city hall to send that out. So I have them resend it, and there was a lot of questions that was asked, and we were talking about the county a little bit in that too, so I have Ms. Lawson, one of the folks, to send that back out.
But we, we don't really need to look at them right now unless we was gonna do.
Well, I understand those several questions about. I mean, we can still have the discussion with them, because eventually, I think, we will have to impose a military, if not, well, can be twenty twenty-four, but twenty twenty-five.
Oh, twenty-six.
I think twenty-six too.
Yeah, we can talk about it now.
We need to get that ball rolling.
Rolling now, yeah. I, 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 that's my opinion, I think the, the village, you got more eyes on, on it, and you got more people involved with the military than opposed to the fire fee, because when you do that fire fee, you, that's gotta go to.
And the fires, I was just, you took the words right out of my mouth, you do the fire fee, it has to go for the fire. You can't use it for anything.
Right, and I think this year, it was just to do the salaries for the fire department, so it can come out of, so we won't have to.
General, come out to general.
Come out of the general.
As long as they ever do that, I know this is, everybody will look at me crazy, contracting fired out.
No, we're not gonna lift you crazy, because somebody brought that up before, contracting, they ain't contracting the garbage out here.
They have the police department, they, they.
Well, I, well, uh, I, I think, uh.
Down in Flemington there.
Yeah, Flemington, they do.
They partner with Heinz with the fire, the sheriff.
When we talk about that garbage, and I listened to, uh, the media about the garbage. Suggestion, when we go to, when we have, I know we said we wanted to look at a contractor, but why don't we try, when we take a garbage truck to the dump, it gets weighed. If I come to Councilman Underwood's house, and he has his trash can and his recycle can full of trash, and we take both of them to the dump, if I do one, his whole neighborhood, we're looking at maybe a hundred houses, that's weight, that's money that we have to pay. I suggest that we pick up and recycling trash cans, because we don't recycle in walk-up bill. And then if somebody wants to have two trash cans, they come down here and get over the system where they're getting charged for two trash cans. Because I drive, when I drive around, I'm like, how, why does all these people have two trash cans? And, and we're picking them up, and this costing us money.
Right.
Only difference would be, only issue would that would be, and it's, it's. Or not, or there's people on the truck, there are two trash cans, only difference is the color of the trash cans right now. That's the only difference, they're both being dumped at the same.
Same, I mean, I didn't know they even went and picked the blue ones up, you guys remember the old blue ones, right? Well, I didn't really even pick them up.
They pick up anything that you said to the road.
No, I, I didn't really pick them up from your house, I was like, I don't, I don't have two trash cans, I got. No, I, I didn't know they picked them up from your house, I was like, I don't, I don't have two trash cans, I got the old blue ones, but, we, we got, yeah, that's the way, I, I'm good with it, but people, people will do what we let them get away with. I was not trying to be, I was not trying to be hard, but.
And the only issue is, when we enforce it, that's when the City Hall has all of the problems with. But, when they initiated the programs, they put, laid out, you gotta pay if you don't, um, there's a, uh, thing where if you don't have recycling in the recycle bin, then you should have been charged and, or assessed a fee, they're not implementing that.
That's the folks on the truck, the City Hall doesn't know that it's, the.
I, I, I think we, we can come up with a better system, I think it's possible for recycle.
Recycling is not meant to make money.
So when recycling. During the meetings that y'all had, uh, a couple months ago, Ms. Moss was saying that she had to go back out to the landfill and they charged us?
That's if you have, if you mix what was supposed to be recycling with regular trash. They were finding food and other items in there.
And that's how the tonnage went going to the landfill became more.
Cause I think they take the recycling to Savannah, right?
I don't know where they take it, they used to take it to Bryan, but now, we just don't recycle it off, everything goes to the landfill.
I think, uh, it's something we wanna revisit later on, we revisit, but as of right now, I say we collect the recycling cans, and then, if somebody has, if somebody's wanna be able to have two, then we, we give with Public Works and, and market. Where it say, okay, I know this house has two, cause you can't expect the guys to go out there and memorize every, every, every house, uh, I mean, there, there's gotta be a, a system in place.
I had to tell you, the chief did that when he was, um. What's his name, I can't think.
No, no, he, that called him chief, he wanted to pass.
The, the, the chief, he was the former chief, and he had a little notebook, and he wrote down everything that was included. Like, if they stopped at your house, he had a notebook with all that was in your garbage. I know, you think I'm, but I'm telling you, I'm telling you.
Today, for example, twenty-five degrees, look, if I'm going back in that garbage truck, hey, if I pull up to your house and you got two, I'm taking two trash cans, I'm not looking at my book, I'm getting jobs, I'm.
No, he would be the tracker, but he documented everything at your house.
And if you did not set your trash can out, you calling, saying they didn't pick up my trash, he said you did not have your trash can, we came this time and wouldn't have this one.
That, I'm a legal witness.
Yeah, I, I just think the, the two trash cans is a, 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 a big issue, I know it's not a favorable issue, but we gotta do what's right, there's no sense of him, because he got a newer house, getting two trash cans compared to me, and I'm living like this, and I can only do one trash can, I, I just don't think that's right.
I have one, I have a.
I have one, and I recycle, but my recycle is literally recycle, I'll put plastic bottles in that.
You take it somewhere?
No, I just take it to the road, although I know they're dumping it in the trash can, but it just makes me feel better to think I'm recycling.
Since my kids moved out, um, yeah, they good at it now.
I tell you what, I've been there for seven years, I've had that blue trash can set in the same spot for seven years.
But, but we, I mean, we're talking about it all, but we have to come up with something, I mean.
And if you have ordinances on the books, you have to enforce those ordinance.
You're right, you're right.
If there's putting stuff in a recycle bin, and it should be garbage on there.
But our, but our, our workers gonna enforce it, is the question, are they gonna look in that recycle bin and say, this isn't recycled?
So, like they said, I mean, it's cold outside, I'm a gray man, I'm just saying, if you trash cans, you keep doing it. Okay, well, if you are not recycling, and if you're recycling, and you go there and leave, you know who work those trucks, you hold those people responsible.
Who gonna do that, is the question.
If, if the, um, if truck number two is not, uh, they bring everything to the landfill, and nothing is recycled, whoever is on the truck number two will be responsible for that. And the driver, and Ms. Moss, cause they get that information from, uh, and you got to hold them accountable. The problem is, we don't hold nobody accountable for nothing.
Do we, do we have a word for recycling?
Yes.
We are supposed to recycle?
Yes.
They're supposed to recycle. And that's another thing that brings up to this.
How many, how many people work over there at Public Works?
Oh, I don't know how.
Three.
And one thing, that's another thing, if a new employee is hired for the City of Walthamville, they should be, they are, should be made to come before council, so everybody will get introduced to them. So, we would know that employee is, uh, a worker of the City of Walthamville. And that's a, uh, a drawback on that.
I do agree with you, but we, I think all cities, we should know who our employee is, like, yes, I agree.
I think recycle starts on page one twelve.
Oh, that's what that is, I hope that, um.
He said he go first, I mean. I didn't know it was an order, I'm like, something you say.
Yeah, we gotta organize them, oh. But the baby is, you gotta enforce it, and if we don't enforce.
Well, what do y'all feel about contracting out, I mean, enforcing it is good, but we're still paying almost twenty grand a month in landfill, we're paying for gas, the maintenance of this truck, all of this is killing us, and I can tell you now, our bank account.
So my contract, contract with the trash?
Yes.
Will our employees, have a job?
The one.
Yes, the way they do it, water, they hire your people.
Right, the guy that I spoke with, right, he said.
That's one of our.
It's gonna be cheaper?
That we don't know, that, in my opinion, that is, that's.
It wasn't waste management.
Is that a waste management?
Republic and, they're some pink company, I don't know what, what their name is, but their truck is pink.
I think we should.
But we don't have a code enforcement, dude.
Yes, we supposed, no, you talking about person, nah, we don't have a code. Probably, I checked before, um, I went to the county, the county said, Anne Heinzville, you have your own. Yeah, it's a police officer, that's the police department, went to the police department, they said, well, we are supposed to, but we don't have anybody right now. So that's another thing I have down here, when Chief comes back from training, to talk about that, and you know that's gonna increase their salary. That you don't have, they gonna say they need more money in their budget, cause you had all the work, you just, you just telling me what you gonna hear.
There's certain things that I don't understand, and I'm just gonna share my life of pain. Walthamville is only three point something miles in radius. Why do we need so many cars and so many, um, uh, vehicles?
What, what car you talking about?
Police. Okay, police, we have ten police cars. According to.
And how many officers?
According to my last recollection, they said it was ten police cars, each officer has a vehicle.
What's wrong with that?
We can't afford it right now, we're leasing, we're leasing.
Each officer have their own car?
We're leasing four vehicles, four, four vehicles, police vehicles, we pay Enterprise probably seven grand a month.
Okay, so what do you do with the officers without a car?
We don't, we don't have ten officers working, right, we don't have ten officers working at a time.
When I brought that question up, as a councilwoman before, I said, we have, how many officers, I spoke directly with you, how many officers do we have? How many vehicles do we have, and I said, what is the problem with them parking their POVs here, jumping in the police car, drive forever, leaving, and the next one take the vehicle, why do we need so many vehicles? And the, the statement was made, well, there was some other stuff said.
The comment was made that, um, it would take too much time, they're wasting time, or they could be responding to calls, if, uh, we leave a, uh, car in the parking lot, and for them to come to the city, uh, come to the police department, get a vehicle, and then go to the call, that's taking too much time.
Well, I don't know about buying more cars, but I believe in my opinion.
We don't need to buy them to talk.
Yeah, I'm not saying buy them a car, but in my opinion, I think everybody should have their own car.
So we.
And I'm a private key, just, just in my opinion.
No, we don't need ten. We don't need ten.
Are we full staff right now, officers? I thought we were short.
They're saying, no.
We're short.
But I need to see, we need to see the justification for those two.
I keep thinking about a city like Flemington, they have one officer, I guess, I said that, right?
But their stuff is contracted out too.
But they have one officer that's dedicated to the whole city of Flemington, and we have ten. Why?
That's a very good question.
Well, don't they have two during the day, two in, in the afternoon, and two at night?
Two during the day and two at night.
Two at night.
And the ones at night, I'm trying to figure out, do they actually work, cause my alarm went off twice, and Liberty County responded before Walthamville responded.
I don't know, I, I, I don't know, I'm just.
Ten seems excessive.
I guess, I, I don't have a.
How many offices we have?
Two, those are the ten.
No, we don't have ten.
We don't have ten, that's the thing, we're short, ten vehicles.
We're short two officers, so we have eight officers? I don't know.
We cannot get a definitive answer on that.
I know one was hired, and the question was asked back then, how we hired a new officer?
The next council, we have a chief.
I'm about to just take.
Yeah, that's what I'm about to do, like, exactly, you gonna do it, I'll let you do it. How many officers do we have on payroll outside of him and Major?
So we have four vehicles, so we own six, and we have four leased from the police.
I know, she showed me a bill the other day from Enterprise, and it was four police vehicles and one fire vehicle from Enterprise that we leased.
Why, why are we leasing a fire vehicle?
That's the talk of that the chief is driving, I don't know why we leasing it, but we leasing it.
Well, your city councilman nothing do with that.
We didn't have nothing to do with it.
We don't have nothing to do with it, but we correct the problem.
I was, I was thinking of fire chief, miss.
I, I don't think the fire chief need a, uh, vehicle, we don't need but one utility vehicle, but I see two in the parking lot.
Utility vehicle?
Two utility vehicles, and.
SUV?
No, 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 that's like a truck, but you put tools on the side.
You know what, when I asked about the utility vehicles, um, I was told the reason they have those, they have two, one was for the water department, and one was for somewhere else over there.
But we're talking about the fire department.
Oh, okay.
Those are leased too, the, the, the utility vehicles?
No, that was, at least not with Enterprise.
And what, we got two ATVs? Okay, why do we need two ATVs? And my comment is.
It was told to me, when I asked the question and I saw it, where did the, uh, where these come from?
They were the fire department.
They were donated.
That's what was told to me.
But this is what I wanna know, who authorized a check that been written for, for the City Hall, for forty-six thousand dollars?
This is on here?
No, they, these are current bills, we already paying.
Who authorized the payment for the forty-six thousand dollars, and?
Didn't come before council, it didn't.
None of this came before council.
And they said it was donated, and I was in Savannah yesterday, and I stopped by Yamaha Savannah, because I had a question. They told me that we did, and I seen the check, we did cut a check to them for forty-six thousand dollars, and they. To Yamaha Savannah for those ATVs, that was not bought to council, so we didn't know about it.
So there was a grant, that they had to spend the money, but.
Who said, where is the grant?
I, I forget what it was called, but.
No, 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 no. Right, but I, I was getting to that part.
It is a grant, where is the documentation to support that it was a grant? And the City of Walthamville gonna have to write a check for forty-six thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's what the, that's street talk, I, I don't.
Right, and that's what the guy at Yamaha said, that's what the fire department told him, there was a USDA grant that was paying for, but we haven't gotten any money from the.
We have, we gotten any grants within the last six months.
I do know with that grant that they're talking about, that USDA or whatever it's called, you could use that for equipment in my ATVs, because it's hard to justify, ATV, and the justification was, in case somebody gets stuck, we can rescue them. I've been in emergency management for seven years, I haven't seen nobody in Walthamville get stuck anywhere, and it's hard to justify to run an ATV on a, uh, municipality that's, I think it's two point six square miles.
On a tour.
Yeah, they're, they're nice.
I bet.
I knew they were nice, I was, I was.
And that was my question, when I went to the fire department, where is one of them, like, one of the vehicles? The, the guy at Yamaha, well, I, I didn't ask, cause nobody was at the fire department to answer me when I had that question, where did he go?
They told us a grant.
Right, and the guy at Yamaha said it was a grant, but that's what Walthamville told him, the fire department told him, and it's fine if it's a grant, but when we gonna get the grant money to replace that forty-six thousand dollars back?
I know you have a.
And not only that, there are two vehicles, that's eighty-something thousand dollars, SUVs.
Now, that SUV, uh, was, uh, I think y'all approved?
We didn't approve.
No, we didn't approve.
No, not did.
No, didn't, no, we didn't.
No, we did not.
So, it's a grant, but we paid for it in anticipation of receiving the grant.
That's what it sounds like.
That's where you, it's usually where you do, uh, it's usually like a, a cost share, that, that grant, I know that's a hundred percent, but you can use that for David equipment, and then, once you turn in the paperwork, you get it reimbursed.
I got it, okay.
Okay, so.
So where is the paperwork?
I don't know.
That's my question.
I'm gonna use pads, I'm gonna work. We weren't the council.
I mean, we were.
We were, but I still have those questions.
That's a good question, I mean, anything to say.
Because we wouldn't have known that we spent forty-six thousand dollars out of SLOSA, and had we not moved to the date, they, they grabbed us the check, we wouldn't have never known.
Well, it's good to have, I, I don't, I'm not saying that this department needed them, but it was just a bad look at the time.
That's my concern.
Brought out when we're in a budget, financial crisis, and so, we're, we're coming out, showing two brand new ATVs, oh, we got them for free, uh.
That's what they said, but, but according to, um, the documentation that the council who's on the checking account, they said, the City of Walthamville paid forty-six thousand dollars. I said, how are we gonna justify to the people for, um, we're asking for money, and we're talking about implementing a, uh, fire fee and a military rate, but we out there spending money like the Yankee.
Right, although that was SLOSA money, which is different from, you know.
How is SLOSA money?
They took that forty-six out of SLOSA, that came out of a SLOSA account.
See, I don't think that's legal.
It came out of a SLOSA account.
So you know it came from the SLOSA, so I don't think that's legal to bring it, so.
You gotta say what you would have spent SLOSA money on, you can't just.
And what they said, our SLOSA said public safety, and I guess they're considering.
Because fire is considered.
Right, so that's how they justified it, but it came out of SLOSA, which doesn't affect our operating costs, so the citizens can say what they wanna say. It didn't come out of, I get it, they're, they gonna get mad, but it didn't come out of, you know, the general operating fund.
So how is that gonna look to the public, when we present to them that, uh, we need to implement this, uh, fire fee and this, uh, military rate? And we didn't bring it before, we have a product before them, and now you gonna tell, oh, we gonna implement this, because that's what the lady asked me at Kroger yesterday, how you all gonna justify telling me that I got to pay a military?
She ain't had no military, that's what she should know from, I should have told her.
No, she.
She was just saying.
If I got to pay a military, why? If I got to pay a military, why are we spending money like this? And I don't care how you chalk it up, you got to show people how the money is being spent. And if you don't.
I agree.
If you don't, they gonna put us under the heat.
Right, and I agree, but that that wasn't operating funds, that was SLOX, which is different from daily operating. I get it, I understand, and.
I think it always say we spend money.
That's all they assume, right, it could have been used for something else.
Like you build your aim.
That's that's no, 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 SLOX can't make that, that's the thing. People always have something to say, but they don't have all the information that we couldn't, can't pay nothing on that out of SLOX.
So why, I thought the city didn't have a credit card, but on this sheet, I see we got several credit cards.
I thought we ain't had none yet until recently.
Did we all find out? With the credit card, who issued the credit cards, was was institutions?
It's not um the banks.
So we still don't know?
We don't know what.
Who issued the credit cards?
It wasn't AmerisBank. No, this is much as we know right now.
It's not the problem of who issued the credit card, who has those credit cards? And where are they right now?
That's true.
Because I'm seeing on here, we got three credit cards.
Just on newspaper?
It's on the.
What page number is that? I do think.
Call them services.
On the first page.
Days come before us before they start purchasing.
So we don't know.
And we see.
We never seen a credit card salesman.
And I've asked multiple times about a credit card.
So why do we authorize it? Why do we authorize the payment of the bill if we can't get the information?
We'll have the information. We can authorize nothing on this, this is what she telling us needs to be paid.
Well, since we talking about.
That's most doesn't know about who.
This is.
I, when I asked um before I took over, there were three credit cards. Police department had one, fire department had one, the mayor had one. And when uh they use credit cards around here, they were using the mayor's credit card, but he was using it as well. Those were supposedly three credit cards, so I asked the bank when we were down there if uh they issued the credit cards and they said no. So I could go back and find out who issued the credit cards.
Do we check with First Bank?
That's what I'm saying, I'm gonna check with her and see.
Do we check with First Bank to see if maybe they did? Cause we used to bank with them at one point, right?
But if that was the case, then it should have been, those cards should have been uh supposed to be.
Right.
When we change banks. Not necessarily, not a credit card.
Yeah, the credit cards will still be open.
Well, now we talking about this money, but this this right here been on my mind since day one, this right here. August fifteenth, um two thousand twenty-three at six o'clock, the last council, I'm I'm reading off this um, this is something I printed out.
Uh-oh.
Sorry, August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six o'clock, uh council cashed in the CD worth five hundred twenty-two thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars.
We didn't cash in the whole thing.
I know, let me finish. Suggested cashing in two hundred and seventy thousand for the general fund to pay the bills. And then uh what we have left, do you know we have, how much we have left out of that CD?
Uh, I could.
Yeah.
Two hundred and five thousand dollars. Two hundred and. No, it's two hundred and five thousand dollars, four hundred ninety.
Two hundred and five.
Then they take that money from.
Twenty-five thousand.
For anything, for anything.
Two hundred and five, four hundred and ninety dollars.
Well, then that should have a balance of two twenty-five.
No, we.
Okay.
So how much is this?
What is it?
The balance is two hundred and five thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay, well, um, I'm I'm, what I'm about to say, I mean, you know, I might not agree with me, but.
I don't.
I know, you know what I'm about to say, we need to take that money and pay all the bills, I just seen it said.
No, we can't, no. We cannot go zero. We cannot go zero.
A hundred and ninety-five dollars.
No, whether we have it, if we have any.
We can't wipe it up.
Nothing, we should not wipe it. You should never wipe it. No, not even your own personal finances, you shouldn't be at all.
At least forty percent of it?
No.
No.
What? Because if we have emergencies. If we have emergencies, we have.
This is my problem, why every month we are transferred?
Okay, so let me tell me how we gonna pay, how 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 this gonna get paid?
That's when you find out where the money is going and then you can't.
And you're right, you see stuff on there that's old, it has this number one asked, when we cashed in to pay the bills to get caught up, why these weren't?
Why do we still have ninety, ninety balance, ninety day balances?
Now there're gonna be ninety days, cause we did that in August, but before.
No, but we paid in July.
Right.
And when that next list of bills came out, there was a thirty day, sixty day, and a ninety day. And I said, wow, we having all of this if we agreed to pay the bills in full. I have.
Do y'all have suggestions how we gonna pay this thing?
They're suggesting that the um CPA said we want to go to the bank and get a loan.
That's another bill though.
Yes.
Well, what are we, do you know what our balance is right now?
I mean, we have a lot of balances.
No, our bank account has.
General fund. We go, we go from September twenty-ninth, two thousand.
But we're spending, spending money.
And we're going on G word two thousand four.
If you don't got, have it, you can't spend it.
Wow, no matter, no matter which way we go, bottom line is, we can't worry about the past, we gotta.
Yeah.
But the bottom line is the bills.
But if we continue to um operate with the same behavior, we gonna end up with the same.
But we're not gonna operate with the same behavior, because of these bills, we know, cause some of this needs to be eliminated anyway.
We gotta look at.
Like what?
Questions.
Center, why are we paying them something? I didn't even touch you off.
Center?
I know they're uniforms, but come on, center.
I mean, but this, if this is for services revenue, then we need to pay our bills.
Right, I agree with that, but.
That's not my problem, that's my problem is, I need to know what the bills are going towards and why do we have these?
Out of.
I I I I agree that we shouldn't deplete our whole savings, but we need to pay some of these bills.
How?
Yes.
With money that we have, that's how.
So you saying, so you saying deplete the.
I didn't say deplete, it's two hundred and five thousand dollars, it's it's a large gap between two hundred and five thousand and zero. But we have bills here.
But look at the total of the bills, three hundred sixty-eight thousand.
I understand.
That ain't even enough to the CD.
I understand.
But we gotta look.
We prioritize them?
If we're.
Exactly.
Look at them, but we can't, in one sentence, if the fire fee don't get paid, we're gonna put a lead on the house and shut off the water. If we're gonna be a governing body, we we gotta set the example, not can we expect residents to pay our bills?
And we.
We're not paying them.
But my fear is, we're gonna, how, and go get a loan, and if the people, the citizens don't pay the fire fee, we can't pay the loan back on top of these other bills.
And I I, and and back to the the thing, I think the better, I know it's not a a a fix and we might need to get some guidance on that. You put it on the village rate instead of the fire fee, because that fire fee is really gotta be spent at fire.
Can only be spent.
Exactly, and we do the buildings, we can put it in the general fund, I know it doesn't help what we got now, but I'm in agreeance with um. Uh, mentioned past, these bills have got to be paid.
I don't, I agree, I agree, but the question is, how are they gonna get paid? And my thing is, we're always talking about um increasing this, getting more revenue, what are we putting back on?
Exactly, that's why I said you got to know where the money is going.
Where we going to go back on? Like what?
For for instance, we can, we can look at the trash, is it gonna be beneficial to contract it out? I think it's gonna be beneficial because we're paying twenty grand a month, that's just in living, that's not in fuel.
So who's gonna take the lead on getting quotes from?
Well, I just emailed y'all one, I got one quote.
You got a quote?
I just emailed you.
I think like we should get three quotes and figure it out.
That's what they're saying.
No, they contracted out too.
So all the way.
Even Riceburg is contracted, everybody contracts it out, except Hinesville. Who is this, Earl Duncan?
Okay, John, this one?
That's that's page two, and that's an attorney, Earl Duncan, who is he?
Why are these bills, like, why do we have so many coastal carrier, coastal electric? Why was?
Coastal electric.
That's like, cause they all station.
The the part of the.
Earl, Earl Duncan.
Just like, who's your power? You have a bill for city hall, then you have a bill for the street lights, and you have a bill for public works, you got a bill for. The sub, substation, police substation, they, that was my question, I can't get one bill.
Our CPA needs to get paid.
Who's, like, who's Earl Duncan?
Twenty-seven thousand?
That's who I'm asking about.
Yeah, who's that, you know?
Our CPA, twenty-seven thousand.
That's what it says, we owe him, twenty-seven thousand.
I ain't seen no twenty-seven thousand.
On page one? I'm on page one, that's Keynes, Hodges and Company?
Right, he break that in the last month or so, but.
Woo. I mean, he been at all his meetings.
Yeah, he just started working last month.
Yeah. I can tell you that.
He just started working in December.
Yes.
They worked, they worked, we decided, man, I know that was uh twenty, so.
We need to discuss it.
Georgia Power, he's gonna get paid. That would be power.
What's the evidence about it?
Have no clue. Like, we got a few men here and then we got Murray's oil, it should be one or the other, why are we paying gas twice?
Kelly Consulting?
From what I was.
That's the best, that's the the con, the.
And I, wait a minute, I, we decided not to.
Not to pay her.
I saw, we decided not to pay her.
They kept her because the fire department was using her to get that grant, the USDA grant or whatever.
Okay, well, they went to the council, no.
We, he said that, he said that in the one of the meetings, cause she asked, were we still using her? Was she working on any grants? And that's why Maxwell said yes, she was working on a grant for him. But you know what, I talked to Chief, she's not doing anything for the police department, department has done anything for a long time. Right, after this last.
We don't need her service.
We said that the last time we met, but we still utilize it.
Go in there for next council, let the council go and do this.
City of Hinesville, no one is in pursuers?
Yes.
We gotta pay them.
Yeah, yeah.
We know we gotta pay them, we gotta pay them.
What, I'm a city, sell that two hundred and five thousand.
I I go with that number.
I I'm a strong yay, like, we need.
Yeah, we're a strong yay. Me too, yeah, we just can't.
We getting late fees, we getting thousands of dollars.
Oh, they get thousands of late fees?
Yeah, I I mean, at every level, we gotta pay the ones that's giving us late fees.
Yeah, but you don't gotta pay late fees. I'm just saying, cause I pay bills at work and we'll scratch right through that late fee, we ain't paying it. We do, and interstate, interstate paper, we scratch the late.
Responsible, and we can't even.
Right, yeah.
I agree, but.
DC three, man, what is that?
That's what you're talking about.
We got sworn in, we had just as many pastors up there as we did councilmen, and in the Bible, it says you pay debts. I didn't go there, but I'm there.
We not already?
Pay the debts.
But I don't want, but, but, but if we got a zero balance with anything, why are we?
I want a zero balance.
You just said it was three.
No, I said, I said, I said.
I just said we should go to Z.
Yeah, I knew it said that.
I said we should prioritize this, and some of these I think are more important than others.
What do we get from record signs?
That's deciding on the, on the side of that new fire truck, that's where that came from. I'll guarantee you that's where it came from.
Hey, how much does the uh postal have to pay for rent?
I've been saying, we need to go up on it, they pay five hundred dollars, probably five, sixty something a month.
Well, we need to go up on it.
I'll just say that way.
Forever, forever.
Ever since they.
Can we look at that too, please?
We've been, yeah, all you gotta do is write a letter to the um.
Where's the forensic on it? That's what we need to do, to find out where monies are going, because all I'm seeing here is totals. Sixty, thirty, and ninety days past due, so what are all these bills for? And we agreed to pay the bills in full, why do we still have a sixty and a ninety day balance past?
I I would figure out how the city.
July, we agreed to pay the bills in full in July.
Councilwoman Kelly, so this is from All Green, they don't read it, All Green, that's the waste management?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that she sent the email to us about um.
They said seventeen dollars per um per trash can.
So we could get one from Republic and Waste Management about the trash.
And that's eliminating fuel for the truck, land filthy, and.
Repair on the truck or.
Repair on the truck, and I was gonna say payroll, you know, your taxes on your payroll, but if we're gonna put them in a different department, you still have that, but if they go with the new company, we're paying less than tax.
The ESG, would that, would they contact?
Yeah.
They would contact.
Yeah, they're, I mean, but would they be.
And Waste Management.
Except another one, I don't know.
You think we, you think they would all?
Well, I was in the elevator with that guy when I was at a conference and he asked me, would we consider going to him? And I said, well, we have our own in our own bank, I said, cause the uh conception is gonna be, we are using. We are taking jobs away from our people, the Walthamville, and I'm not in agreement with that here. However, what they usually do, just like with finance field, they hire the people that are already working in those departments.
Right, but I said, we can't make everybody happy, I understand we taking jobs. But we gotta do something, far as financial wise, we, we're not gonna make everybody happy that they're in this area.
That's not my goal, that's not my goal, because we need to make a decision as to how are we gonna go about going forward? We're sitting here, I don't know what time it is, and we still haven't come to a conclusion.
On nothing, that's why I said.
Well, I think we can brainstorm and.
Yeah, we can't make.
Okay, yeah, we just. I know we can, but we still haven't come to a conclusion.
Right.
It's by.
That's why we're brainstorming, getting.
We've, we've already come to to the solution that we need to um look at other options for waste management. And we're going to um get different quotes, we'll get with ESG to see if that's something that they would offer, and they could do a support as well. Um, in regards to the uh millage, so uh what what else are we waiting on to come up with a solid number? You know, like a a study or what?
We can be audit, that's what we need, what what we need to do is to do an audit.
I can't wrap my mind around spending twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand dollars.
It's more than that.
The more is, the more difficult for me to wrap my mind around it, when we owe Georgia Power.
So you're saying we don't need a forensic audit?
I'm saying.
We need a forensic audit.
Especially when the bank account got opened December twenty-ninth, why was this account open?
Who's doing the audit?
We had, we had, we had the other company to do it, yeah.
But.
And the.
All of the media for forensic audit.
Every year, no?
Whenever new management coming in, a, an audit should be done at that time.
That's a different type of audit.
So y'all refer to the forensic audit?
Yeah.
And how much approximately would that be?
The starting fee was twenty-five thousand, and we set that aside, and now I'm told that um the, what is it? The uh CD is what, two thousand?
Two hundred, two hundred.
Let me ask you a question, would we save more money by contracting the the garbage out? Or would we save more money by contracting fire?
With the fire, my thing is, we done invested too much money in the fire department on those shit, all those trucks.
But, and and here's, hear me out on that, so that can be um a bargaining tool. Hey, you know what, we're contracting out, if you can use our building, if you take off X, Y, Z, you can use our trucks if you take out X, Y, Z. This is an example, I mean, I know everybody wants fire, I'm a big thing of. This is an example, I mean, I know everybody wants fire, I'm a big thing of, uh, the fire public safety, because when your house catches on fire.
I don't give a darn whether you certify or not, all I want you to come with a tanker and water to put the fire out of my house.
Now, if we contract fire out, how does that affect the charter per se if we impose a military? Because we have to provide certain services.
You're still gonna provide, you're contracted, you're contracted, you're paying for it, just as, as a municipality, it's just.
And we can ask our attorney to be clear on that, you know, how does that work with, um, we got to provide services?
That's the same thing with Flemington, you're providing.
Yeah, they're doing the same thing, and they'll be bringing up opposing mills.
You're providing a service.
Flemington cannot afford that, and what our bills cannot, and that's because Flemington get all the motel and hotel taxes.
Flemington can afford a military?
I mean, no, they're about to impose a military, they can't afford that, because they don't pay any taxes as it is. They collect all of the hotel and the motel taxes, with the exception of, um, the one right there.
Right, I'm confused on what you're saying, talking about they can afford a military, but.
I mean, that, that. Citizens can't afford it, because they don't pay any taxes.
What they have to do, we don't pay no taxes either.
Right.
But we're about to implement a tax, and we're aware, we're gonna do it like a turkey, don't have to.
Flemington is doing, is thinking about the future.
Yes.
Okay, they can afford it now, and they wanna afford it ten years from now, and twenty years from now, that's where we need to get, you see what I'm saying? So they can't afford.
Preaching to the choir.
Okay.
With all the money they're taking in, it's not gonna hurt them to have a, another little military, and they are predicting that they will.
Right, but with them, maybe I'm thinking about it wrong, y'all are saying they don't need a military, because they get hotel taxes.
No, what I'm saying is, they don't collect it now, because they collect all of the hotel and the motel taxes that Liberty County has. There's a hotel in Midway, and then there is one, two, I think, three, in Hinesville, all the other hotels in Liberty County.
On Flemington.
And.
Right, okay, but, but.
That just justifies why we need a military like yesterday.
Right, why don't you have to say they can afford it, like, what?
We, we can't afford to not have a military.
Right.
Yeah.
So, at our next council meeting, are we going to address the issue of relooking the village rate? Is that what y'all want?
I do.
Absolutely.
Well, okay, well, we, let me do this, 'cause I feel like we just be going in circles with everything, we had the public hearing. If we say we gonna discuss a military rate, when we discuss it, we need to say the military rate is gonna be.
Yeah.
And, and, whatever, and then we have this public hearing, whatever, but it's not gonna go into effect twenty twenty three, where we at?
Twenty twenty four.
It's not gonna go into effect twenty twenty four, so what are we gonna do for money for twenty twenty four?
We need to stop believing.
Right, so, and it sounds like we're not even gonna do the fire fee as of right now either, so we're gonna have to go amend the budget, because that was included in the budget. So where are we? 'Cause our bank account only has no money yet.
We can't go back on this fire fee, honestly, the, like I said, well, the fire fee is, is a Band-Aid on a bully.
Right, and that, that was supposed to be just for this year, so if we're doing a fire fee for twenty twenty four to carry us through, how are we gonna do it? If that's what we're gonna do, if we're not gonna do it, how are we gonna get money? And we can't go to the bank and ask for any money, because we don't have the guarantee on how we're gonna pay it back.
If we don't have collateral.
Right, if we're gonna, I know that a concern is with Long County, can't we just, if we're not gonna provide those services, that's just excluded. How difficult is that? I, I, you know, like, as far as adding it to the water bill, how, how difficult is it to, okay, these hundred or so parcels?
Those, those houses over there, Smiley Woods, that's in Long County, they get our water, we can still charge them, because at the end of the day, if they call and say their house is on fire, Wataville is gonna respond.
That's what I was saying.
At the end of the day, Wataville is gonna respond.
That's not, no, no, no. So that's not the way, if nine one one is called right now, say, in, in the city of Hinesville, so dispatch is based, based off of your address when you call, that's how they're dispatching the fire trucks, now, once you get on scene.
You can ask for assistance.
You can ask for mutual aid, there's no money exchanged on mutual aid agreement, if, because I see them all the time on Arnel and pass, uh, on Griffin. The house right there, uh, that is in Long County, you have a Long County fire truck coming all the way from Lewissee to respond to that thing, so.
Okay, well, let's exclude that hundred, although, Wataville is gonna respond, but let's exclude that, those hundred houses over there.
But you also gotta look at when the, the fire, we have, we're talking about gas and stuff, some of these first responders, i.e. police and, uh, uh, oh, fire, self-dispatch, hear a call, I'm.
Well, I'm sure that's right, that's right.
It, 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 that's, it costs money, 'cause I know when, um, yeah, yeah.
If we.
When they do that, is that documented? It's not documented at nine one one, is it?
Yeah, you can look at that, I can look at.
I'd be like that idea.
If they self-dispatch, if they're calling in.
If they respond to a call, and they called in, but you wasn't requesting, that's a self-dispatch.
Okay, I'm sorry, I think if we assess our commercial buildings accordingly, not by twenty five dollars, but if, if we increase theirs based on, um, the risk factor, square footage, that will make up for those Long County, that'll make, it'll probably exceed it. You know, we just need to have a formula that makes sense, and is transparent and equitable, that's it. I think we have, we establish a base rate, and then have factor, factor in, um, again, the risk factors and the property value. And come up with a number, square footage.
I mean, because you got, say, right there where, where, uh, there, that lot right beside, you don't have a water bill, but if his, uh, his woods gets on fire, the Wataville is gonna put him out, he don't, he's not paying a fire fee, because there's nothing on that lot, but he's still on his property there, what are we doing about that?
So we can ask for what with the fire fee, how?
There's always exceptions, we, we can't just forego the whole thing just 'cause there's exceptions.
Yeah.
You know, we, we need to get this revenue in.
I agree, and the question is, how are we gonna do it?
Attach it to the water bill, we already said that, we have to believe.
Well, we have.
But again, like he said, this guy that doesn't have anything on his property, it's not fair to him that he has on his water bill, and then not to this person, and we're still responding.
I think if there's nothing on his property, charge him at least a base rate.
He don't, how, 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 how's he gonna get the bill? Same thing, going back to the taxes at the county.
Like, right, how's he gonna get the bill if he don't have a water bill, and then if he doesn't pay it?
Oh, he, he, he got you.
If he won't get, he won't get fire taxes.
But, but how does the fire department know he didn't pay?
No, but that house. Has been watered by him for that, I don't know, and we're talking about anomalies, we're talking about a few exceptions.
But it's still.
It is, I, I, I agree.
You own the property, there's an address for that property, contact the person who owns the property, and.
Listen, listen, I'm gonna tell you right now.
Okay.
If you call me, I know I'm speaking about that lot in, in Philadelph, if you call me and say, hey, you, you, I'm the city of Wataville, and you owe a twenty five dollar fee, three hundred and five dollars, and say, who, who are you? Why are you calling me for this mess?
I would say, keep that same energy, move on, bud.
But, you know what, he probably don't care, 'cause, like I said, he lives in Philadelphia, but me, I care if that springs to my house.
Right.
And I think, either way we look at the fire fee, if we do it on the water bill, or we do it on, uh, the tax thing, we're gonna have to revisit, because it's, it was just, hey, we're gonna do a twenty five.
They were just throwing, basically, just throwing.
Well, they can't, if we're gonna do it for twenty twenty four, it can't go on the tax bill, that's not an option if we're gonna do it for twenty twenty four.
But I, I think we have to have meetings like this, where we're amongst us and not in front of people, where we come up with a plan, and we have to go take a loan now, or, or whatever. But the bottom line is, we, we need to start somewhere.
The visitor, visitors, Rogers, looking back.
No, I'm saying, to, 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 to carry us until we get the military fire fee.
We have a source of income.
But if we had a military rate, that would be the source, or, uh, we can't really say, uh, fire fee is a source of income, because I'm probably going to the fire department.
Right.
I think we have to educate ourselves on that military rate.
The village rate can be used for anything, but the fire fee has to go towards the fire department.
And the military gives us collateral, hey, you're going to collect it, 'cause it's.
Yeah. Now, that might be collateral for me alone.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to talk to you, I know people don't like taking.
And it's, it's, it's can be used to get, uh, the money from the railroad as well, what you mean?
Right, right.
The railroad coming through here, the tax, railroad tax, because you don't have a military right now, you can't go after the railroad. You all see in Savannah, they implemented that quiet zone, and I was telling y'all about the, uh, quiet zone for the railroad. In Savannah, they just implemented it.
Game made in twenty twenty four.
Yes, ma'am.
What we gonna do?
And I, I'm not so sure that city hall has even put, have, have they even implemented the fire fee or?
No, no, no.
So they're just waiting on guidance from us. Uh, uh, there's a, there's a, a lot of people have questions about that, and even I have questions about that fire fee, that, um, subject matter experts need to be involved with that, I mean, we brought up ten questions on the fire fee, and we're the ones imposing that.
Is there such, am I making this up? I might, maybe making this up, but I don't think I'm making it up, 'cause I know they have it. In Hartford, East Hartford, they have what they call a city tax, instead of, or city fee, city tax.
The military is.
Nope, they have a military and they have a city tax.
Oh, really?
Yes, and the city tax can go towards anything per se, and not just fire or whatever, can we do something like, can we look into something like that? Instead of calling it a fire fee or fire or whatever, so it can go towards.
Anything that we need to.
Right.
And can we tax, like, gas, like, like, maybe like at Parker's?
Well, we supposed to.
A penny a gallon.
We, we get that through SLOPS, that's SLOPS money, the county is sending us a SLOPS check money.
Yeah, I mean, you figure, you got three of the busiest businesses in Wataville, whether it be bootleggers or meat workers, the meat market and, and pork market, I mean, you got three of the busiest.
Don't put in gas stations.
No, I'm saying the busiest in Liberty County, they're three right there, probably the busiest in Liberty County.
I agree.
Three of the, the top businesses, I mean, how many times you drive by a meat market and there's a lion at the door?
I was the door.
I was like, what is he selling? I would like to know what he's selling as well, I said, if I.
You can't even get in the parking lot, they just turned us.
I, I think on these bills, there's still questions, I mean, we bring, uh, the, the department heads, I guess, is that what they call them here?
To bring it down, what's.
To bring it down, what it, what it is, what it.
This thing needs to be fixed as soon as possible, this is all I've been thinking about right here.
Yeah, and I mean, we're continuing to get, uh.
And we just, yeah.
A one, we know it's a uniform, A D T is security.
So let me, let me, let me back up on these uniforms, who, why are we paying that much for uniforms?
For the cleaning, and the question I asked was for the cleaning or san, uh, sanitation.
When they go out. All the uniforms, police department, sanitation.
And the replacement of them, the cleaning of them, because there's certain hazardous materials they come into contact with. Even with the fire department, they have to be special.
Yeah, I get it.
I don't know, crew, alley, environment, yeah, we all know who paintings is, gray cars, center is uniforms as well, so we're paying uniforms, center and A one. Coastal Carrier, newspaper, Coastal Electric, all, uh.
Light poles?
No, not all of them, see, like, I'm Coastal Electric where I live.
Okay.
And those should be too.
Yeah, I'm Coastal.
And then some of the lights, and then the pump station, some of the pump station are Coastal Electric. Coastal ice machine.
I know we had.
Fire department, the fire department, Coastal Regional, I don't know what that is, four thousand dollars.
Coastal Regional, Coastal Regional, Coastal Regional.
Is that the bus line or something? I've been seeing Coastal Regional as a bus.
I can't, I can't.
That's Liberty Transit, that's.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, Coastal Regional is a, a bus line that take, uh, um, senior citizens to take them to appointments, uh, they got it by, uh, they got buses down there by, at the senior building in, um.
At the park, Schuman, yeah.
At Schuman Center.
Yeah.
What are we doing for that?
That may be a different Coastal Regional, but that's the only one I can think of.
But there is also the Coastal Regional that, um, they be monthly according, I can't remember, um, the people that do the county workshop, they're considered Coastal Regional.
Okay, and then the county jail, we know what that is, the software, we know what that is.
We got that many people going to jail.
Yes, he was shrouded up.
What do they charge, like seventy five dollars a day?
I'm not sure, I know on the, uh, on the paperwork the judge showed me, it was five seventy five the fee, the fine, and then seventy five dollars go to, uh, the probation officer, it's split between the probation officer and the jail.
And we have to pay the jail, 'cause we don't have our own jail.
To have, to have, um. What is creative?
Product, I don't know what that is.
What is that? I, I don't know.
Yeah, the second page, that's how, I don't know what that is, Dawson's General, that's when they go, you know, pick up supplies. These electrical, I don't know, Bob's Equipment, I don't know.
No.
Exactly, like, uh, did they lend the equipment to fix a sewer leak or a water bus?
I would, I would say. I would say no to that, because that's what we pay O M, O M I or.
Who, who's the attorney, who is that?
We don't know.
I don't know.
We've only seen one different attorney other than Moses.
Y'all giving, we are giving money to people we don't know, Earl too.
Empire Chemical, I think that's the chemical where we buy the stuff for the water.
Justin.
Yeah, Eco Science, I don't know, Empire Chemical, again, Enterprise Fleet, that's for all these leased vehicles.
And that's monthly? We pay six thousand dollars a month?
No, twelve.
That's the total, 'cause it looks.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, we pay about, like I said, about seven thousand a month on leased vehicles.
Well, they said it was, is it cheaper to lease than buy?
It is, because when you lease, they maintain it and all that other stuff, but we don't need four, five. We, I think we're leasing four, we're leasing four, and then the fire chief, we're leasing his vehicle.
Some of the things need to go back.
I agree.
Do we have a contract?
Fire chief could be on the fire truck.
Or he could be in one of the, uh, one of those other smaller vehicles.
So that's something we can discuss, sending a fire truck back, the fire.
Fire truck.
Not the fire chief truck, the Tahoe, not the fire truck. The Tahoe. Fueling is gas, Georgia Power, you know, all the lights, Globe Life, I don't know.
That's sounding like insurance, yeah.
But we don't pay Globe Life for our employees' insurance, so I don't know, Georgia Tech Authority, I don't know, G M A, we know what that is, Georgia Southern, Exterminator, we just don't get neither of them for free.
Yeah, forget them.
Georgia Southern, that might be that extension.
That's out there. No, that's Exterminator.
No, no, she's talking about G S.
G S C C.
I don't know what that is either.
That looks like, uh, uh, that might be for the police as far as running checks.
It's court records.
Is there a court thing?
It's a court, court, court stuff, yeah. And then here is hardwood, we know what that is, Ace, they go buy stuff.
They charging the late fee, yeah.
Jones, Osteen Jones, that's the city attorney, Kelly Consulting, that's the, um.
Grand writer.
Grand writer, but we, we not getting her.
Release, we don't need her service.
That's one, you know, some five hundred dollars, Liberty County Board of Commissioners, L C P. Liberty County Board of Commissioners, LCPC, Liberty Breaking Tire, I feel like we pay them every single month.
Oh, this is real money.
For something, like why are our vehicles breaking down all the time?
And we have a mechanic on duty.
Amen to that.
I asked about that and they said it's some things that he can do that have to be done at um O M I.
Do we need him?
Okay, well then why are we paying him when we could pay, do a one stop shop?
Yep.
Local Victim Fund, we know what that is, Lowe's, we know what that is, mobile communication, I think that's like their radios.
Yeah.
Morris Newspaper, I don't know why we pay.
That's the coastal courier.
Coastal Curry on the first page.
They got Coastal Curry on there.
Morris Communication is the parent company.
Oh.
So why are we paying both?
I can tell you, Morris Communication is the parent company.
Murray Oil, they're the ones who bring the gas.
They got paid though, right?
No, it's right here, we go down for.
No, I forgot.
No, they they gotta have a pay.
They got paid.
Oh, if you just say you put payment on here.
Well, they didn't get paid the whole thing, we just paid enough for them to come bring us some more, some more gas, so we still owe.
So we still owe for this eleven one, eleven nine, eleven fifteen dollars?
Most likely, I think we paid up till October, so we still owe. Peace Officers, we know what that is, Pay Credit Corporation, I don't know what that is.
That might be the credit card.
Probably.
No, it's credit cards on the front.
No, it's on it's on number paid for too.
Credit Card Service Center, I think one of these, like the credit card service center is, we pay them when people use debit cards.
Oh, okay.
You have to pay a process.
And they pay.
Right in.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to pay a process to be, so one of those might be that. Pitney Bowes is stamped psychological resources, I'm assuming that's resources.
That's where um.
They send the police officers before they get out of here?
Or um it it's a psychological um.
Yes.
Root testing.
Okay, and then Robert Purple is the judge, Solid Waste Authority, that's where we take the trash.
Now, I've got something I wanna um bring up, I talked to Judge Purple yesterday, and my question to him was, there's been times when you didn't show up for court, but you still got paid. I wanna know if, when you do not show up for court, what you gonna do about it, because they're paying you six hundred dollars a time, so.
Six hundred dollars a month, right? It's a month.
Yeah, look monthly to me, that's.
If if he, well, that's on, he only comes one time, that's my second time. Um, I said, so if you do not show up, then we need to do something about this.
But doesn't somebody come in his place?
No, and I asked, could someone come in his place, because I go and I sit in from time to time. And he said they could, but he doesn't feel like that they would be up to speed on what he's doing, I said, then you need to come over and fix, because we cannot have people who show up and you're not here.
That's true.
He said it only happens, I, but if it happens, there's a problem. So what he wants to look at, and I told him I would bring to the council, is if he missed within the same month, you hold court again. He wanted to, like if he missed in this month, then carry it over to the next month.
They being court on their month.
That's what I said, and I told him.
You were taking off of work, citizen's.
People are getting babysitters.
Right, that's like paying a doctor, fifty dollars for you don't show up.
And I know that, and I say. We not talking about people who only get tickets and walking, I mean, you have people coming from Savannah and other places, so I told him, look at rescheduling within the same month, what do y'all feel about it?
Oh, I feel, yeah.
Well, I wouldn't even say that, because again, you had people come and he wasn't there, and then they gotta come back again.
But the issue is if he he's not gonna get paid, and that's what I'm trying to throw out. If you weren't there, why are you getting paid six hundred dollars?
True, but being considerate of the people that are coming to court, just send somebody in your place.
There you go. Yeah.
Or or if it's a Wednesday of every month, don't make plans.
We need to know in advance and you can't make that.
Right.
When he uh he said when he didn't come, he's only missed twice. One time he was sick and he couldn't make it in that day, I said, could you have sent somebody in, he said, I don't feel like they would be up to speed on how we do stuff. A judge is a judge, so pay a fine, my theory is, I put it before you guys, how do y'all wanna see it done?
If I didn't show up for, I didn't have time, I didn't get paid.
Right.
Period.
Period.
So either, right, he don't get paid if he don't show up, or send somebody in your place, because people are already expected to come to that court date that it took.
And in case of emergencies, it will be rescheduled within that time.
And then we have a lot of transient people who uh they're coming from all over, and you can't come from New York and expect to come back next month because I'm not here this month.
Right.
Yeah, back up to.
So I bring that up.
I mean, because I had a ticket at True Accounting, I ain't go to court, just log on and pay the bill.
Yeah, and this too far.
Yeah, right, I ain't gonna argue with you guys saying I wasn't speeding.
We must have some money, we don't have.
Two other things, two other things we need to, I need for y'all to think about so we can discuss at the council meeting, our city attorney, if we wanna keep the same city attorney, and the municipal board judge.
That's this guy, Purple.
I have no problem with it, but I don't like a missing court, you know what I'm saying, somebody else.
If that's his sentiments about missing court, I don't like that.
And he's my judge for like what, he need his judge.
He's been out here for four, several years.
Yes, I think he's a little whiskey, he is.
So in honor for, I mean, I know you have to have me an attorney, but, because I thought he was an attorney.
He is an attorney.
But, so what makes you a judge? Is it just a title?
You have to be appointed.
You have to be appointed, by who?
First cert. And then you have to have so many, you have to have certifications to be a judge.
Right, like for him, he has to be a J D, he has to have a a law degree. But like for Ms. Astewal, Judge Astewal, she's elected, she doesn't have to have a law degree, but Purple.
Now they do. But when she got her, when she was um appointed, she was appointed first, but when she got elected, she was grandfather to him.
Okay, but he has to have a J D.
Does council have the ability to appoint someone with the J D as a judge?
We have the the council having, the council votes, yeah, vote, that's why I'm throwing it out there.
So we could find an attorney and appoint to be our judge, I yeah, that's what I'm asking, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Like I said.
Just like we can find another city attorney if we decided.
Right.
Our our attorney can't be the judge?
No.
He's a prosecutor.
That's double, double term.
So it'd be different attorneys there.
Yeah.
Like I said, Purple can have a backup, you know?
We got a backup judge.
So then be kind of say, when I bring it up, y'all say what y'all wanna do, because we can't vote here.
Right, right.
How long has Purple been?
Fourteen years.
Here?
That's what he told me yesterday, bro.
Did he say he only missed two days?
That's what he said.
Fourteen year? I always thought uh what, Stafford, not uh.
Arnold?
Arnold.
I always thought he was a judge here.
He is a judge, but he's not full on that yet.
And another thing I was told, I don't know, I ain't never got a ticket on that bill, and I only sat in court one time, he throws a lot of stuff out, like.
I addressed that yesterday.
Like this, Purple.
That's what I was.
He did, that's what I been told.
Where y'all sitting, where y'all sitting, y'all be, y'all sitting in the back and just walk, you can't sit in the.
From the times, little four yesterday, when I would sit in, it's the third, was it third Wednesday, Wednesday of the month.
Third Wednesday.
We apply, from the times I sat in before and watched, he did a lot, he even uh, I even saw him reaching his pocket and give a hundred dollars, solid hundred dollar bill to a guy and his family who came down from Savannah that uh, you know, they needed some help with some stuff. But he throws out a lot, he threw out a lot of stuff, I addressed that yesterday, I said, I know I can't tell you what to do as a judge, but I'm not sure. So that's when he said, when he said that the um, the program that they're doing now.
Oh, okay, the verse, the verse, okay, okay, okay.
It it don't make that mistake, make that statement.
Right.
It uh.
No, no, no.
Because we will be.
So court was today?
No, yesterday.
Yesterday at three?
Today, Wednesday.
He was yesterday.
So it was on Tuesdays?
Okay.
I thought I got my. Okay, so it was on Tuesdays, so that's.
It was on Thursday, Tuesday, at three o'clock.
Verizon, we know what that is, the DC three is the software that they use for the water bill, V P, V I P, office supplies, Walton, I don't know. Rapid signs, we know what it is, but what we splat, two hundred and sixty dollars on.
I just told you where.
You're right, and then it that, it was just recently, because it says one twelve twenty twenty four.
So our biggest bill is.
I think those two signs were the changes of mayor and police department over there, yeah.
Rapid signs did.
And we also got signs on with fire trucks.
I don't think Rapid signs did that.
Yeah, I don't see it. I wouldn't tell who did the signs, I would just tell.
Cause I couldn't get it.
So our our biggest bills, I I think we need to look at our biggest bill, we're looking at the the.
Georgia Power.
Georgia Power, the Canes, we got people that's on, and the.
I think Canes was very popular, sir.
Well, let me, let me, let me tell you this, you remember I brought it up, we talked about if we were going to uh, a lot of things were thrown out about Canes and everything, so with the money from the mayor's vehicle that was turned in, we were looking at hiring our finance officer for here, so we can get our monthly statements and we can see how everything, what's being spent and everything. And we really need to stay on top of it, and.
But that's only a thousand dollars a month, that can't afford a finance person.
Part time. We have to look at, we have to look at, it's a start, that's what I'm saying, it's a start.
Right, right.
We have to do something, because we're not getting uh, we're not getting what we need, and accord, and from the questions that we asked, if we have our own finance officer, that's less we have to pay the Canes, but in house.
Right.
But my question I'm throwing out, do y'all wanna stay with Canes or you wanna look for somebody else? I agree, I I agree.
And you talking about the.
C P A, yes.
I just wanna make sure we don't, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He could have been gone yesterday, so.
So what are what are we gonna do in the meantime, with uh a C P A?
C P A.
Or C P A, I'm sorry.
Find another, I mean, we gonna have to keep him until we can replace him.
I I think with the the part time person, when you start talking that level of expertise that you uh, C P A.
No, 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 it's not the same, we've had the same.
We've had an in-house finance person. It was during this administration that the person left.
She left year two.
Yes.
Who was it?
Shandra Cox.
Oh.
And uh we used to give a monthly report by the fourth Tuesday of the month.
So like January, our January meeting, she will bring the December report.
Yes.
So we know, we knew how much money we bought in and how much money we spent.
Was going out, we haven't gotten that in.
Three years.
Three years.
That's how about you there, man. So we don't have this happen, I mean, I think we need a budget report, oh yeah.
And we didn't get this, we got copies, uh she was very detailed.
She broke it down.
What was wrong and all that, itemized, that's like.
And no bids, and no bids, because I asked a question today, Canes, every time he comes here, five hundred dollars, additional to what he is paying. So we really.
But like I said, he racked up that twenty seven in November and December, because that's the only time he did work, when it was budget time, he racked up that twenty seven thousand, those two months.
Just to tell.
I mean.
Just to tell us nothing.
Exactly, exactly.
That's what y'all ready to do, but you need to hire somebody, y'all broke.
Now, now pay me, yeah.
But um.
But I do think we need to look at some of these uh.
And she was very good, I mean, she was on point with.
Where she at now?
She's with Shelton, she's the uh director of the shelter.
Oh, yeah, y'all lost a good one.
When when she left here, she went to Riceboro, then she left Riceboro and went to the shelter.
And everybody at home is a well lover, that she has worked, that they didn't have to go looking for nothing, it was there.
I think we need to look at the bills that's gonna keep us in good standing with I E, the uh solid waste, I mean, you can't.
Well, I talked to uh Commissioner uh Gili yesterday, and he says regardless of how much it is, they're not gonna shut us down as far as they go. They're gonna get, they're gonna work for us.
And there's no.
But it's still, we still.
But did you talk to Joey Brown, or you talked?
I have a meeting with Joey Brown next week.
Oh, I'm glad you said that about Joey Brown, about that fire, is is he, he he's cutting us off, or we cutting them off, or what?
He cut us off, he said they not paying us, so we cut them off, we can't serve the unincorporated.
That's sad.
County.
Cause he cut us off. They have to pick it up.
No, I heard, I think that's coming back, have you talked to Lou Moses about that?
I've seen Joey Chase in mine.
With the, not with the what you guys want it, but you guys.
Commissioner's probably, I have a meeting with them next week.
And with, I think that whole fire fee was wasn't explained properly, because if we look at that area, you're looking at how many houses, how many structures? You're looking at approximately seventy, seventy structures of that unincorporated area that that contract is.
No, I don't think we have any houses in unincorporated.
No, no, I'm talking about that fire thing with the county, that fire agreement, that the sixteen thousand dollars that came up with the the fifty thousand. I mean, you, it don't matter, maybe one way or the other, but if you're only looking at about seventy structures, and you know, where's the map?
So basically, we should have took the check and just.
No, but what you fail to realize is the amount of gas that's gonna be here to go and cover that area.
I'm very surprised you didn't.
Right, and I just threw fifty out there to start off as a negotiator, if, I I knew they weren't gonna pay fifty, but let's come in the middle somewhere.
They were watching the video, so.
It probably got mad, probably got mad.
I mean, I threw fifty out there, because I know they weren't gonna pay.
What, Mary, I don't want you to be here, Mary.
Mary says gonna talk to him next week, right?
Oh, but you you gotta look, I know what, the the fire chief said that Liberty County isn't gonna tell us how to respond to the cost. That's not, that's not necessarily true, because if you hire somebody, hey, this is what you expect. Now, if you do something extra or more, that's on you, you you can't, you can't fault that.
When you got your head in the lion's mouth, you have to ease it out, you don't just.
I mean, you're, you know what I'm saying, you're looking, you're looking at probably seventy structures in that uh.
So what do what do you suggest?
Here's the thing, so that contract goes July, July first, June thirty. We've already done seven months of it, so we're just going through seven months of it away? You see, you see what I'm saying, because if they say, okay, we're not gonna sign the contract, okay, we're not gonna reimburse you for the seven months, that's yeah, that you you already did. Some of some of them calls, and I know people wants the fire, but some of those fire calls that they go on, do they really, what what is a firefighter gonna do for a psychiatric call?
Right. Maybe the N O T or something else.
I mean, you did. So what we gonna do about this right here?
What?
About the bill, so we're not gonna pay anything? That's very concerning to me, I'm gonna bring it up at every meeting.
And if you, and if you say pay for it out of the CD, I'm gonna say no, okay, what I wanna drop down casino.
I I know we don't wanna take out loans, but I I think we're not gonna break that C D like we don't want to, but nobody wants to, but we still need to pay our bills. I think if we go to the millage rate option, it gives us some collateral to go get a loan, but when we got some, when we can pay the bills, we sustain, and then when we start getting the millage rate, I I'm just using that as an example, if we say, hey, we're gonna do a twenty five millage rate, and it's gonna.
Send them vehicles back.
Oh, yeah. We're gonna produce this much money, and then year two.
Twenty, no, it can't be.
We need that, we go to twenties. And if we need that, we go to twenties.
That's our plan.
We have more collateral if we do.
I thought since it was past January.
I agree, I agree, but, or we gonna pay for this year, because the millage doesn't go into effect this year.
Right, I think, I think.
Twenty six, we can't stop.
Take a loan, but you got that collateral, or millage, we got income coming in.
So you're saying, if we do a millage rate, you're saying go to the main, get a loan for twenty twenty four.
Right.
But we gotta pay it back, December twenty twenty four.
We give one year to pay that back.
But we're gonna get the money, if we get it now, March, we're gonna get the millage, we're already got collateral.
People pay with twenty six.
Yeah, that's too.
No, twenty five, if we impose it today.
If we impose it before the, uh.
Before the end of January.
Yeah.
But we won't get it until twenty twenty five, but our loan is gonna do December twenty twenty four.
Twenty fifth of this month?
I mean, they may give us a grace period, thirty days.
We're late on everything else, we could be late on a lot.
Nah, they ain't gonna let you do late on that, they coming to get their money, coming with a pad.
Well, we need to go ahead and come up with a military number then.
Well, I think with the, the way moving forward, we talk to Ms. Glenda and, and get, get educated on it. And then we start bringing it in, into the meeting, I don't know if we can do, uh, get educated before we have our next, uh, council meeting. But that, that needs to be taught probably.
And we need to pass it before January twenty fifth, the.
January thirty first.
Of this month, to get it passed.
To, in order for it to take effect in twenty twenty five.
Oh, shit, we gotta hurt up there.
But remember, if we do a loan, we have to have collateral, you have to know where it's coming from, and you got one year to pay that back.
Well, I think the collateral, if, if, hey, we impose the millage rate, this is what we're expecting based off of the, the tax commission on, uh, the millage rate that we set, this is the amount that we're gonna receive on the millage. We're gonna have these for the citizens that quit? I don't think, and, and, and something, I don't know if there's like a, a fifteen day or thirty day grace period with, with, I, I mean, Ms. Glenda would be the, the smart one on that. When do we have to?
Ms. Rogers on the loan, yeah.
Rogers on the line, and I'm thinking, the, cause he said you have to pay it back in a year, so I don't know if that means December or a year when we take it out. So we back at military, that what you're trying to say?
We have to be, we ain't back, we, we pushing forward with that, and as far as this, um.
How are we gonna determine the mill though?
Well, I think we get that based off of Mrs., uh.
Glenda.
Glenda, contact G M A, get some subject.
Cause we can't go with Canes, we cannot go with his recommendation.
Well, I think, uh, once we get educated on it, and Ms. Glenda gives us a, a ballpark figure, and then him as a, uh, finance guy is gonna say, okay, this is what you're gonna bring in based off of X, Y, and Z, and then we can look at, we need two hundred thousand dollars to operate. Okay, we need to set it at ten, or we need to set it at twelve, and like I was telling Ms. Kelly, if we set it at twenty five, who's to say next year we don't lower it down to twenty? I'm just using twenty five as an example.
He's wanna have some cushion.
We got, we gotta.
Okay, so, I'm just saying, this sounds like the plan, whoa, nevermind, cause.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It, it, that, it can't be the plan, because if we impose a military, it has to be done by January, right?
Nah, I, I don't know.
Cause I was gonna say, if we impose it, I, I say at least March, you know, but it can't be, whatever, cause that's just giving us time to get information. Giving us time to give that information to the citizens.
We need to talk about this, because honestly, our budget, we need to start talking about twenty twenty five budget in March. Because according to our charter, we supposed to have a budget adopted no later than June.
No, no, it's December, no, it's not, it's December.
Okay.
December and here.
Which one?
Cause our fiscal year goes, our fiscal year goes from January to December, so it has to be adopted by December.
That's in the charter?
Yeah, yeah.
So I must read the old charter then.
There should be a blurb in there showing that it was chan, that was changed.
Cause our fiscal year has changed.
Well, I think, uh.
But, I agree, budget needs to start getting worked on way before.
Before the end of the year.
Before, we used to do it in August.
I used to, I was pushing for August, July, August. But we didn't work out that way this year.
But that was because people didn't show up, we're gonna show up for this.
Right.
Make sure.
You called the ones who showed up?
Bridget, Bridget, Miss, Miss Syria, Miss Hayes, we showed up, we showed up to the charter meeting, we showed up to the.
But I was the past guy, we, we do before, we.
But we showed up.
We showed up, but, okay, getting back, what's the plan for the military, cause we need, cause I'm looking at our balance, we, we gotta do something.
I'm, I'm all for anything that we have to do to adopt a millage by the end of this month, whatever that is. If we gotta be back to back, whatever's within the limits of the law, that we can do.
All right, so, I'm, I'm about to be real elementary and real late in term. Step number one is get in touch with the tax assessor's office and see when she can meet with us to give us information on.
Yes.
Once we meet with her, step two is.
Oh, we gonna bring G M A into this?
No.
You think, no, we don't need to, okay?
I mean, we can, cause they can do a study, but that's just gonna take more time.
Yeah.
Once we figure out what our mill, what our mill needs to be, then we put it out to the citizens.
Okay.
So, step one is tax assessor's office, step two is determine the mill, step three is.
Let the citizens know. So we should contact the tax assessor like.
Tomorrow, I'll be down there tomorrow.
And then, don't we have a meeting next month, next week?
Next week, next Tuesday.
It would be good to have a, a number right there in front of them.
Right, by next week.
Yeah.
Now, my quest, other question is, just like we're doing this work session, and I'm, I'm saying this for us, you know, for a reason. In these council meetings, we need to be, uh, a little bit more cognizant of being professional. So I think that, what do you guys feel about having, uh, coming in thirty minutes early before the council meeting? Try doing, saying this before and get overshadowed, and it never happened. And that way, if we have some differences on something, we can discuss it, and it won't look bad on us, because people are, are, this is, uh, like a sideshow. They argue, they fuss, they stuff like.
Well, I thought that's why we're having this work session.
To bring this stuff up here, that's what I'm doing, I have this whole list.
I like that, by the way, yeah, I like.
What do y'all think, thirty minutes prior to the council meeting, we can sit down and hash out what we're going to, uh, well, we can't make any decisions, of course, but we can bring up if we have any.
I, I agree, man.
Yeah, I agree.
As a matter, I was, when I was attending, I attended that G M A meeting in November, and I was talking to some representatives from Richland Hill. And they do this prior to every.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
I thought cities. And they vote an hour prior too.
Do y'all want, do y'all think, y'all wanna take off the first one and see it for thirty minutes, or y'all wanna just start off with an hour?
Well, it would also depend so what's on the, what's on the agenda. Now, if we have a lengthy agenda, you may need more time to conduct the, um.
Some of them may even bring, like, I know we ain't got the money, we can do water and apples, but some of them just put food in there, and then the council or the commissioners just come in and grab, and then we're talking.
And don't have to worry about getting off of work and being hungry.
Yeah, I mean, the, the hour, I mean, I don't get off work until five, like the five thirty, I, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreeance with that.
Five, I think that's a great idea, that way we're not.
We can start with the thirty minutes and then.
Yeah.
The other thing.
And then we can push out our council meeting back if we have to.
Yeah, the other thing is, I, I, I always believe in a long range calendar. Calendar of events, calendar of things that's going on, so we need to have a long range calendar and pay attention to the things that are happening that we need to attend. There's a lot of meetings and everything that I think the council, if y'all want, y'all should be able to attend as well, so you know what's going on. For example, the S P L S meetings, and there is money for you, S P L S available.
Chief said we have six full time, two part time, and of the six full time work is one, work, one is out on work miss com.
Kelly, that's the, uh.
Six full time, two part time? And one waiting to hear back about job favor. Vegas, Vegas supposed to be leaving, sometimes some, but that's been for months. Is a heck, one of them.
Heck, supposed to be going to U S Marshal.
Well, there's another area that he's waiting on to go to, because the U S Marshal's taking a while, so he's talking, I talked to him yesterday.
Okay.
Okay.
And I still like these work sessions.
Okay, and it's the other thing, on that long range calendar, we need to set a date to review the charter and update the charter.
Yes, Lord.
So, look at your, uh, your, your times and everything, and when we come back together next week, have some ideas of what month and what week would be good for you, I know we have, uh, that to do, and these city ordinances. As far as, I heard something, y'all correct me if, if I'm wrong, did I hear in a council meeting where the police chief, past police chief was doing, working on, I did, city ordinances, that's for the city council.
Um.
Hey. That is for, uh, the city council to do, by charter, mayor council do city ordinances. And we should be reviewing the, the ordinances, well, reviewing the policies for each department. Um, so we're gonna look at, look at both of those things. Council meetings, I've added back citizen input, only three per session, and they only get three minutes.
Before the meeting or?
After the very end.
Okay.
After, after. Video recording will take place for each one of the, each one of the meetings, do we have to? We don't necessarily have to.
This precautionary.
Best practice, that's what.
Trying to be.
I agree.
Yeah. Uh, I think if we're gonna do that, we need to invest in some better.
I'd be saying that.
I know we don't have the money, but.
I tried, and when, uh, I got the, what was it, the twenty thousand dollars at time to do it. Had the people to come down, they gave a quote on the microphones, the speakers, the T V, and the computer. And the, and the desktop speaker, the desk speakers, and that was told by the, at that time, the building won't support that because it's an old building and you're wasting money, we need to look at it again.
I mean, cause if you're giving a brief.
Yes.
I know when I came in there and gave a brief, it's hard for me to look at the T V screen, and, and you guys not even seeing the T V screen, and you guys look at it, I don't even know what you got to look at.
I had some citizens that was.
That's why I moved.
Wanted to, uh, donate flooring and other things in there, and it was listened to that the building's old and you just throwing away money, I don't agree with it.
And I know there's stipulations because I know it's an historical building, but I, I, I think, uh, that can be.
Is it registered as a historical building?
It is, it, it, it's just unprofessional look, the way, I mean, the paneling, I mean, that's seventies, eighties.
Not only that, the acoustics in there, and you got the big old speakers that no one still can hear what's going on in the microphones.
Oh, you couldn't hear them dancing, no, I couldn't hear.
May work, may not work, so. Okay.
I, I, we, we need a bigger place, I, I don't know how that works as far as, and I, I liked it when we had, um, or when you guys had the meeting in, uh, the fire station where you can hold more people, I mean, it's, and I, I think if we post it, we can hold it there.
We can, we can, the council is in agreement with it.
I, I think it costs more.
Yeah, it was costing.
My, my ears got it hurting with that, that's a law that I gotta put up with.
And that's another thing that hit down here, the city when it comes to council meetings.
I like sitting front, I don't like sideways, looking at the, you know how y'all had the side, I like looking at the people, I don't like looking at the wall. Would I like that?
You know how the, the, up, up where the mayor, the, uh, the.
It used to be in a U shape.
Right, and I like that way better, cause when I'm talking, I have to turn around to talk to the people back.
I'm not a big fan of people talking behind my, my, yeah, but I like looking forward, cause I think y'all had it sideways. You know what I'm talking about, well, I'm sorry.
I know, there is always.
But, yeah, I previously said side, I like looking.
So you like the way it is?
No, he wants the U shape.
Or everybody, everybody can see the citizens.
Yes.
Nobody turn, I think the, the right side was turned this way.
The right side is like this, and they can see up on there and, and the citizens in the left side, like, like you facing each other.
Yeah, everybody need to face.
The way it was before, instead of everybody facing forward.
Yeah, I'm like, yeah.
You got two, two, and then four.
Yeah, I like that, but, yeah.
I'm not a big fan of the, the way that, yeah.
Right, I.
Cause I was gonna ask you, who, where you got it sitting at, cause I didn't wanna sit where, yeah, I don't like facing the wall.
Uh, I, 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 let me go over this, and y'all can, I'm throwing this out here. Uh, Councilwoman Kelly, I want us to take a vote on Councilwoman Kelly being the mayor pro temp starting out for this, uh, for this term. Uh, and her areas gonna be special projects, there are some grants out there. There are, um, things coming down from O S O F and Warnock for money that we can get. The county commissioner, uh, Gillian, when I talked to him yesterday, he told me that hisself, Marion Stevens, and, um, what's the female name, uh, Kylie Thrift, that they are all our county commissioners. And I'm gonna get a map of where their divide is, but he said that they've been handing down some money, and they wanna, they want to work with Rock Island. One of the things that I talked to him about, and, uh, I wanna make sure y'all know this, and I'm gonna get a list, remember when we asked about the dirt roads, and we didn't get a list? And then we got a quick verbal list, we're gonna get that list, and they're gonna.
Who has it?
Uh, the county commissioner, he knows, he was telling me about twenty two dirt roads in Long Island.
Who is he?
Gillian, Commissioner Gillian.
So he has the list for Long Island?
He knows, he said he had been talking to the past mayor, so he knows, uh, the roads and everything. But my emphasis to him was what the fire department was telling me, their medical vehicle that had to get to some patients down some of those roads, they couldn't get to them.
You got that A T V?
It was before the A T Vs. So, we're gonna look at that, and anything else that you need, uh, he's gonna come, I'd like for all three of them to come. And we all can sit down and talk and meet, and then take a drive, and also like for everybody, especially the new people, to go and see where our, um, our, um, our what?
Pumps.
All of our pumps and, uh, so everything, pump stations, everything is, so everybody will know. There shouldn't be anything that the citizens should ask us about that we don't have a clue.
You're right about that.
It shouldn't be, um, prior to, I was working on it last year, but just got an email from the, uh, guy that's over the L mean grant.
L mean, uh-huh. It's due January thirty first. And like I said, I was working with Ms. Moss and working with Turnip Seed. We had a hiccup because evidently it wasn't closed out the last time we received that grant, which was like twenty twenty, but long story short, I'm gonna pick back up where we left off to get that, and my suggestion for the road, cause you don't get a whole whole lot or whatever, but anyways, you get something, something is better than nothing, to finish off Griffin Road.
But there's a new thing that they put out, they meaning, um, our senators, where is, if it infringes on public safety, there are federal funds out there, this just came out.
Okay, but as far as that grant, I know he closes, and he sent an email saying, hey, where y'all at?
Okay.
Um.
For.
Finish, and, I mean, if y'all want to.
Pursue it?
Pursue it, and if y'all think if another road needs to be done, I just say Griffin Road, because it, it won't cost as much as paving a complete dirt road.
Just wait till I come off the council before we pay, get it, I don't need people saying, oh, he's a council, he got the.
And I, and I'm.
But that's, that's a big old way.
That was in action, anything.
Right, and, and I was pushing for that because Ms. Bill calls every single day about something.
But I went out there, I've been out there eight times, five of those times I set my car and watched, it's ridiculous. The speed limit thirty five and they fly. The speed limit thirty-five and they flying.
Well, Washington called me, it's been, I, I've noticed, uh, T Freed and his people has been setting right down Carter clocking.
Yeah, I called DOT and DOT, uh, told me that is, uh, it's not a, uh, a state road, it's a city road and it's up to Rockville.
And I think we should get a sign saying no big trucks down this road, those eighteen wheelers.
When I recommended that, it went.
What did it take?
We can do that.
I know we could, but they told me when we were on council, uh, no one supported the idea of putting a weight limit for trucks or, um, axle. Cause I, I brought it up.
That's like a shortcut to, uh.
It is, but they can still, they don't have to go that way. They do not have to go, there is, uh, uh, the reason they're doing that, majority of them. Like the ones that are working on construction for houses and everything, there's a dump area on Griffin. When you go past down, uh. So, they're dumping, they're dumping down there. But, I'll say this, I'll say this too. Councilwoman Kelly brought it out already tonight. We did a lot of talking about things, but not a lot of follow through. We need the follow through of this stuff. We can, um, we can impose, uh, a weight limit for the vehicles. We need to, I put this stuff down here to talk to the city attorney so he can get busy doing what we need done.
Follow through there, remember we asked about the annexation.
Let me, let me, let me say this, let me say this, let me say this. I talked to him very sternly.
Who, who is this?
And he made phone calls to y'all.
No.
To some of y'all. Okay, to some of y'all. And the, what he, from what he told me, he was told to do what he did. What I said, if we keep you and I'm talking to the council about this, your role is to sit there until you ask a question.
You need to tell the city clerk that as well. Cause she talks out of turn.
Okay, okay, I could address that as well.
With that weight limit, how, how would you, uh, enforce it?
Wouldn't, uh, law enforcement enforce it?
That would be.
But I mean, the, um.
We don't have, you mean with the scale?
Scales, the weight.
That's why they have the axle, that's why they have the.
Actual restriction.
Axle.
So, we're looking more or less, uh, actual restriction compared to a.
Weight restriction.
Weight restriction.
It's just like some, like, like, um, the ordinance we talked about, where eighteen wheelers can't come through subdivisions and be parked like that. It's the same difference, they're tearing up the roads.
Oh, yeah, the weight, it definitely does tear it up. Cause I knew, uh, that dump company comes up there all the time.
Alright, so the first follow through is the military. Tax assistance office determining the meals, citizen input rate.
Are, are we gonna have, are, are we gonna have a meeting before our next?
I think we should.
That way we got answers on how we're gonna approach it because the way we're going now, we're gonna have to relook at this budget. If we take that fire fee out based off of the military. Uh, uh, it's gonna be a lot of questions that on Tuesday, if, if we get to that far, I, I don't know what Linda's schedule's like. But there's gonna be a lot of questions asked, hey, we're not gonna impose the fire fee, but we're gonna impose the twenty-five military. And these are the next three meetings that we're gonna have to let you get citizens input. We need to get this done by January thirty-first so we can start collecting revenue and, and the way we move forward with the budget. Hey, we're gonna impose this military, but we're taking out a small business loan. Or, uh, a loan to pay our bills to carry us till twenty-twenty-five. I think that's the way moving forward. And then you're, you're gonna ask us on Tuesday about if we're gonna keep the turn. Is that a motion that has to be made or?
Yes.
Come on, Mr. Kane or? Oh, Mr. Mo.
And I have to ask you about Kanes as well, because we need to, um, or do y'all just wanna hold off on that?
Well, with Kanes, I mean, I think we should keep him until we replace him with another CPA or a part-time person.
I think we should hold off. Keep it until we get a new. I think we're gonna move fast going to that, but I think for that, I think.
We can wait till next.
We can wait till the next meeting. And then you're gonna also want a motion on the, the protest or how does that work?
Make a mo, I, I say that, um, I would like, um, for the council to, um, make a motion for the new, uh, mayor pro temp, for the mayor pro temp. And I recommend, uh, Councilwoman Kelly and then y'all talk, y'all say what you say and make the motion.
So, when we go from that meeting, we're really doing two things. The, the, we're gonna vote on the, the, um, attorney, the protest, and we're gonna do information based off of the information we found out from Linda and then the media with that.
Okay, uh, Councilman Underwood, youth commission. I talked to you, um, about how you feel about interacting with the youth and everything. And you work hand in hand, uh, with Park and Recreation as far as.
Recreation should fall under here.
Right, youth commission, just.
That's a big, that's a big, big thing.
I, I say, uh,
Why I said that is you have money now, you can get stuff for that park.
We've been saying that to you.
No, you have money.
Well, I think.
Where she is lost, is that what it is?
Gary and Marion and, uh, Connie are saying that we have money. That project that they did out there on Airport Road with that park, I mean, that would be good.
And the walking, walking path.
Cause he did text me, Gary did text me, say, hey, talk to me after the first year, I do have money for that stuff.
And also from the meeting this morning, there are, um, there's money out there for like, um, um, bike paths, uh, walking paths, safety things, public safety things. And that would be a good thing if you wanna do something like that for the park, there is money out there.
Yeah, I would love to see it like that.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have senior citizens. The senior citizens that I work with, not work with, but I'm a part of, we're getting ready to start, uh, trike exercise group. We don't have any place to start other than, uh, Hillary.
That's another thing I have on my thing, Hillary Park, can we get it back, can we go back to?
It's, uh, um, it's a contract that can we.
Was that for fifty years?
It was for fifty years when we did it initially, however, between the two parties, they can cancel.
Okay.
That's what they can?
Look, they can, because the county has.
But can we afford to maintain it right about now?
Do what?
Can we afford to maintain it? Who paid, do we pay the light bill out there?
I don't know, I'll check on it though. But anyways, I think we should get our park back.
Why did they let it go to the county anyways?
Um, the county said that they would maintain the park and all that stuff, but they have not done anything.
Grass during the summer, I'm gonna tell you, I went out there, that grass was high as my knee.
And, um, and that was done when I first got on council to do that. And it was, I thought it would've been a good idea to have the county to do it because they do other, um, contracts throughout the county. But they did do walkout here like they did in the other counties, I mean, the other part of the county.
And you know, if you throw that in there about, uh, senior citizens, that's a different pot of money as well. Federal government is recognizing, um, fitness and health incentives, so.
I think when we look at the military, we take out a consideration with senior citizens paying water bill.
The exempt?
Not exempt, but you know.
Profer, profer.
But you know, there's certain, there's gotta be certain guidelines, I mean, I can't be eighty years old and having my.
Well, what's the age of senior citizens now?
Sixty-five?
Sixty-five. I mean, it don't have to be sixty-five, we say, hey, if you're seventy, uh, or whatever, it's based off of incomes, it was sixty-five or whatever.
But before we started doing all that with the, um, you know, give them people discounts for their water bill. The, um, water system has not been worked on since they implemented. And Mayor Pray reduced the, uh, bill by five dollars, even though that may not be much. She, she used to give them a discount of five dollars. However, we need to put some money in the pot because we're gonna eventually have to repair the, um, water system.
Not just repair the water system, how it was going up on the rates.
Yep.
And with these new subdivisions, we're gonna have to increase the water capacity. And we have hydrants that need to be replaced that's a cost of two hundred and fifty dollars per hydrant. And.
Right, and, and meters, and like they said, our meters are gonna be obsolete as well.
And that's something we could look at as, as far as a grant, but a lot of times when you do those grants, you're looking at seventy-five, twenty-five. Cost share or, or whatever, but I think we'll have some leverage.
If we have the leverage.
If we have a millage where we can start putting some stuff forward and then we, then we come back once, once the stuff, we start seeing that, that, that we're improving.
But I did talk to, uh, cap, Commissioner Gillian yesterday about some of this stuff too. And, um, he mentioned a block grant.
The what?
A block grant for some of this and we won't have to pay anything back on that. So, that's something that we can, uh, we can look at.
And, and a lot of times you have qualifications in the, that it's not gonna give you money and.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
For two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in debt, hey, man, you gotta pay the bill now, man.
Okay, Councilman Dodd, emergency management liaison. There is, uh, when I looked at some of the things that we haven't done, if there was an emergency right now, there's a lot that Walkout Bill's not ready for. Um, and we need to make sure those lines of communication are open as far as when something happens or the threat of something happening. And we need, uh, Councilman Dodd, get something about, um, misinformation being put out.
Yeah, I think we got, who, who runs our, uh?
City Hall.
Who runs our webpage?
City Hall.
City Hall.
Not the web, not the city of walkoutville.com page.
Who runs that?
That is.
BC three.
Yeah, that's one of these people on the middle, yeah.
So, yeah.
But like the Facebook page, somebody here in City Hall does.
But I was looking at the thing, Code Red, they don't have Code Red.
No. Why is that on our Facebook, why is that on our website?
And then, uh, I think, I think Berns is still for, uh.
Yeah, all of this is up there.
All of that.
Yeah, but we're still paying them there, yeah, yeah.
But then, but then sometimes I think it's just lack of communication, do we know that City Hall is telling them to update this information, you know?
It's like if you call Fire Department, other people's names and all that stuff. Just like on the page.
Oh, it is the Fire Department number down.
No, the direct line.
Well, it used to be a four oh eight number.
I, I have three different numbers on there and depending on when you call it.
I just.
Councilman Boston, uh, Boston is Rosenbrowns. And you know, you can understand why, cause he does a lot of that council, council in love with Park and Recreation.
So, we're not merging youth commission and Park and Recreation?
No, not right now, no. I want him to actually start up a youth commission.
So, you were economic development, we not gonna have that anymore.
We need to, I think we need to focus on things that we need to fix. And these are things we need to fix.
We don't need to overlook, overlook the things that we need.
We don't need economic development.
Yes.
Oh, we're not going to, but our focus right now, we're not, we're not gonna overlook that. But right now, we have this stuff we need to, we need to fix. Um, oh. Career colleges. And I know this is something different, but I didn't understand when it was built. Why is that considered, this is something else I spoke of yesterday and I'm wanting to check on. Why is it considered, uh, a county entity and it's not, it's Walkout?
What, career county?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is Walkout.
That's Walkout Bill.
Because nobody pushed the issue.
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
But that's Walkout Bill jurisdiction, cause we did.
It is.
Taylor Talk over there and Chief Reed said, hey, that's.
And we should be getting the educational tax for that, but we don't.
Right.
Well, I mentioned that to Commissioner Gillian yesterday and I told him I am looking and I'm gonna leave with it. So, when we sit down and talk, that's one, I've never understood that.
Cause that's on my taxes.
But, school. But, uh, I remember when, uh, Mayor Pray, when they built it there, they, Mayor Pray was, and she got a, uh, invitation to come down there. I'm like, why are you getting an invitation when it's in Walkout?
Yep.
So, that's revenue right there. And plus the, the police department was talking about patrolling down there.
Yeah, cause remember when they had, uh, not the riots, but that, what that church when they was having. Contests and then the police was coming out there all the time.
I told you, I tripped the alarm there and Walkout was okay, the county gang come.
Okay.
I guess it just depends, like I said, the county came involved.
Yeah, I think the camp, the Walkout Bill line goes right there to, right there where you turn into the, uh, jail.
I guess it just depends on what time too.
But it used to go from.
No, I'm saying like, cause it was one, two o'clock in the morning when my alarm went off and the county showed up. I'm like, where was I?
Cause that, that alarm sets at ten at that school, so it was definitely after ten.
Okay, so we have some things to discuss. Um, so our next little session will be right before council meeting. We decide if we want thirty minutes or an hour, what do we say?
Thirty.
Thirty, thirty, we start off with thirty.
But I thought we was gonna try to meet earlier based off of.
The.
The tax.
The tax, uh, etc.
Okay, tell me what y'all, what y'all wanna do?
I think we gotta base it off of Ms. Glenn.
Cause our council meeting is on the twenty-third, actually, one, two, three, four, yeah, our next council meeting is next Tuesday.
Yeah.
I know, I know Ms. Glenn pretty well too, I talked to her and I said.
I'm going to see her tomorrow.
Okay.
I don't know if she can get a brief.
Right, cause I was gonna say.
She's already been out here.
She had, she had the brief prepared.
She does.
And she might be able to give some guidance, say, hey, no, you can wage it till February if you, inside by February, I, I don't know.
Is there anything else it is?
But I like this though.
It's neat. The last thing I'm trying to touch on, the last thing I'm gonna touch on. If we, if we get in council meeting or any of these meetings and we disagree. Y'all hear me.
You're right, that wins.
If we get in council meeting or one of these meetings and we disagree on something, y'all, let's remember we're adults and we need to keep it professional. I think I'm pretty easy to get along with and able to, uh, able to, uh, listen to any and everybody, take suggestions from any and everybody. The worst thing we can do is when we get in these meetings and somebody's talking, whether it's me as the mayor or you as council members, and you overtalk them or you talk mean or whatever, that's a lot of that on these videos that we have, that we need to remain professional. Okay.
Yeah, I think, uh, you're, you're right, it is a show, cause a lot of people say, man, I can't wait to get on that, I'm getting, I'm getting hot one. But I think, everybody knows we're in a bad situation. Uh, I.
But I'm just ready to prove them wrong.
And I think if we show. And I think if we show unity, they're, they're, hey, they're unity, they might be broke, but they're, you know, they're all on the same accord. I, I think moving forward, I, I think that's a good, a good idea.
And let me, let me explain something, and then I'm done, and yeah, if y'all got anything to say, I'm here to listen. The purpose for doing the inauguration. I wanted, there was a lot of bad um. Bad information about Walkoutville being broke, it was even said that someone was gonna talk to uh. Uh, uh, a state representative and get our charter taken away, and we were gonna be annexed, I, I'm telling you. We were gonna be annexed into Heinzville, I had a public official come to me. And say, I need to talk to you uh about annexing. I said, if you're talking about Walkoutville, it's gonna be a short conversation, and that happened. When I talked to uh Gillian yesterday, he said he had heard that, he had heard something about annexing. I said, well, let me, let me stop you right there, when it comes to Walkoutville, that's not happening. And I hope, I know y'all feel the same way, right? So, us being on one accord when we go in there, wherever we are, we can disagree. We can disagree, we can whatever, but not in public. My intent for the inauguration was. We were looking bad after all of that talk about uh us being broke and everything. I've saved up some money, I wanted us to have a nice inauguration. I'm by myself, I'm retired twice, I wasn't trying to hit y'all's pockets. But I know, when people, when I, when I was running for office and everything, people were trying to give me money, I don't take donations. I don't take contributions for my campaigns or anything, I save up my money. I didn't know y'all's pockets, I don't know what y'all have to do or whatever, y'all have families, my kids are grown. Like I say, I've retired twice, I'm not bragging, I'm just telling you how I am. I don't mind spending my money on things I need to, I won't spend my money on, so. I drove all over Walkoutville, looking for a place for us to hold this inauguration, okay? I didn't think that it was big enough, because I wanted everybody to be comfortable. I went to the Career Academy, we walked through that building, and that room was not big enough, it was not big enough. I went to the churches and everything, but I felt like. Not everybody wants to do something in a church basement or a church multipurpose room. I wanted everybody to be comfortable. So, my son said, if you wanna DJ, I will pay for the DJ, and he did. I paid for the building out of my pocket. Uh, I used um, I used uh. I sent out the message to the uh council members, if anybody wanted to bring anything, you could've brought a bag of tailors. And it would, it would've been fine with me. But what I wanted was for us to have a good showing and to feel comfortable and to breathe after all this financial stuff. It was not to insult anybody, it wasn't to leave anybody out. I know when we did inaugurations before, when I came to council, we had no input. We were told to show up, and this is this, and this was rehearsal day and stuff like that, I sent information out asking questions. So, what I'm saying is, what I do is to be inclusive, it's not to hurt anybody's feelings. But everybody here works except for me. So, I did the legwork, I went in my bank account and I paid for things, and I think we had, it was a good showing, it was a nice time. Everybody was, was wonderful, everybody. The saxophonist, I paid for that because I love saxophone, but that's not the reason I did it. Because with having a DJ, everybody doesn't listen to loud music. I wanted people, like, if we wanted to go in there and take pictures, or to sit and be still, or talk with our family. I didn't know who was gonna have family coming in from work, but if you have like a elderly uh mom or dad or somebody. I wanted them to have a place where they could sit and be comfortable, and talk to their new councilman, talk to their new mayor. Talk to, take pictures or whatever, so that's, that's why I did it the way I did it, okay? It wasn't to be offensive to anyone, it wasn't to hurt anybody, my mind was on making things good for each and every one of y'all. It was.
But did you put that out to everyone, and not only asking this question for clarity purposes?
I thought I did, because when you sent out, I asked uh Councilwoman Kelly, could she help me? Cause I was busy doing that, and I was busy doing some other things with my grandkids and my stuff. And in between then, and I know y'all didn't know, I had an issue with my house where the AC flooded, and I have mold in my house. I've been living in a hotel for the longest now, I just went into my son's house, so I had all of that to take care of.
Oh, you didn't have to explain that part to me.
But I don't mind, I'm trying.
I just wanted to know, did you make that clear to everyone?
And with.
And because I didn't get that message, I really didn't.
Did you get any of the emails?
I got some of them, yeah.
See, I didn't know that, I did not know that, and when Councilman Dodd said what he said about uh. Using his personal cellphone, I did, I didn't know what cell, I didn't know the numbers of what, what, what was what.
And with that, can, can we start a group text message now with whatever numbers everybody wants to use?
I know Ms. Levitt.
Be careful about the sunshine laws or what we discuss on texts because.
Right, I mean, no, the text is just like, you know, hey, we got a meeting at five thirty, whatever.
Yeah, we can do that.
And I know Ms. Levitt doesn't have a city phone.
Right.
So, everybody, can I just get everybody's numbers and start this text? And whatever number y'all wanna use, Mitch?
Not only number, but not only numbers, but email addresses, that's what I programmed in my phone. And I had to take it from uh messages that Miss Moss had sent out.
So you're talking that group, this group chat is just gonna be us?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you, what, what number?
I'm, I'm gonna give you a totally different.
See the cellphone.
I'm gonna, I'm not even gonna give you that one, I'll do my personal.
Mine is nine one two six nine eight eleven eighty-six.
Nine eight one one eight six. That's his, that's not his personal phone, right?
That's the city.
So Patrick, what number do you wanna use?
Nine one two three two one eight two seven two.
Eight two seven, and that's just, that's personal?
So, personal, with the group with us, I'm good with the, the three three seven? Four zero one?
Four zero one?
Eight four nine four. But publicly, they can use my city.
You're right, that's what me think, yeah, that's what.
So nine one two three three seven?
No, oh.
Yeah, that's what you said.
Three three seven?
That's the area code.
There it goes. There it goes, three three seven, four zero one?
Four zero one.
Eight four nine four.
Eight four nine four.
There was the, the city email, that's fine.
My personal, nine one two four nine two.
Five one six five. So that's everybody, right? Ms. Levitt, well, I'm sending the text, so, Ms. Levitt. Eleven eighty-six is Mitch, eighty-four ninety-four Dodd, and Sarah Yates, right?
I think we off to a good start, y'all, I think we always keep lines of communication open, be honest in each other's feelings. How we conduct ourselves. I think we're off to a good start.
Like I said.
Y'all got anything?
Personally, I like having these workshops before we go to meeting, this is, this is what I like.
Okay.
Okay, are we good?
So. So we don't have no money for the training, this uh.
I got your background, right?
Oh, everybody, one, two, three, four. I was telling him.
Did you put uh?
The past one, just Patrick, so delete that one.
I thought I put Patrick number, I guess I went on delete, delete it.
Right now, with the funds that we don't have. Um. We all gonna have to come to the decision on doing something, cause we gotta get some training. I have to go, y'all three have to go, but I think um. We should try and figure out a way to either, but it's too late for Atlanta, but Savannah.
It's not too late for them, and I wanted to go.
What you talking about, there's a lot of.
Well, they have two, the January, two major, January and June.
January, I was supposed to receive my two awards in, in Atlanta.
So you are going, aren't you? Oh, I thought you was on the list to go, no.
So you're one of the. We're going to the. That's the only, that's the only one we got, that's the only place to give it?
No.
They give it in Tifton or Athens.
And there was a question, and I'm not trying to uh be offensive or step on anybody's toes, but I wanna ask a question. Why don't you choose Athens?
We didn't choose anything, they did, they, they said this is what you're going, yeah, we didn't choose.
Yeah, we did.
They booked it.
That's why I just asked.
I asked the question, and I was. She told us that y'all.
No, ma'am, they gave it.
But look, 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 I was looking financial wise, Tifton is closer, Athens is four and a half hours away.
That's where we're driving to.
To Athens?
Yes.
That's where the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth, yup, yup.
We were, you were there.
I told.
Yeah, I heard that.
Let me, I called, now keep in mind, I went to two GMA trainings.
That you paid for?
That I paid for. I co- I found out at the GMA training that I had to go to a newly elected train, I didn't, I didn't even know. So, I contacted Miss Moss, and I told her I wanted to go to Athens. The reason that I told her that was because I've been to Athens before, and I felt that Athens had more as a city. But I was gonna pay for it.
Been to Tifton before?
I know.
I think Tifton has more than Athens.
Going the same one I'm going?
I'm going to Athens.
To you, on the same day as us.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I asked, I requested to go to Athens, but like I said, that's when I said that I was gonna pay for it.
Some decisions are made without your consent, please.
But look, and I, I'll bring that up too, but look.
Well, here on out.
Fiscally speaking, fiscally speaking, until we get a handle on the money issues. We may have to choose one place, either Atlanta or Savannah, we may have to do that.
You talking about for our training or just the other train?
Well, you guys are gonna have training uh for our training, for our training. And that's because of lack of funds. But we getting all these vehicles, but we don't have any funds.
Athens for the rest of them, cause I initiated it, I don't know, you know, but like I said, when I presented it, I was gonna pay for it. But then I was told that the law says you can't do that, you gotta.
The law says you can't pay for your own training, Ms. Levitt, I paid for.
No, for that, for the.
You talking about the newly.
The newly elected train.
The law don't say that you can't pay for it, the law states that you have.
That's what I was talking about Pam, now about Miss Moss. Pam said, the city has to pay for this.
Yeah, newly elected, okay.
I'm trying to do a VTC.
What's that?
Virchel.
Okay, it is now uh eighty-four five, so. Uh, I'll call this meeting adjourned, thank you everybody for coming, and um. You asked a question, I'll find out when uh Miss Roberts or somebody can get with us. But our next meeting is Tuesday.
Alright, okay.
You want me to resend that video out so y'all have something to look at?
So if we don't hear from Miss Roberts, what's her? Our name, I hear Miss Roberts, we don't hear Miss Roberts. What's I get to say on Tuesday as far as the bills?
May I make a statement before you close this meeting out, please? I just wanna tell the newly elected people that I'm looking forward to working.
Me too, absolutely.
And I just want to know, I do speak by land, but. Oh, you see, you know that.
I don't know how to handle it, I, yeah.
No, don't say you can handle it.
So Mayor, let me ask you a question real quick, if I could just. Is everybody aware of the Georgia Open meetings, and the fact that whenever this forum is open to the public?
That's why this was open to the public.
Right, but I'm just, I, I heard some other discussions about pre-meeting and things, and it does.
No, no, those will be open to the public somewhere, we know that, yeah. We're not gonna do anything wrong.